Yes, sir.
He's in a fox in costume, I think.
He is indeed. It's a hot job, but...
Baby just came out too soon.
Yeah, we were sitting this earlier today, right?
Color. Love it. Thank you. Okay.
No, only the top.
Only the top. All right. Good to know. I predict someone's gonna break one of those in the next couple of months. Sorry, no such luck. You can just dock or pay. Go, Neil.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I like this video a lot better than the other one. I can actually see this one. It's not like it's so good away from us. This is great.
It is better.
Sure, if you've got an extra, if you've got an extra copy. Otherwise, I can follow along on my email.
The quality of the light is better, although it's very white.
I'm good, thank you.
The light is white.
Person has her own spotlight, looks like.
Good evening. We'd like to call the Durham City Council meeting to order. This been Monday, the seventh of July, the seventh of August. And certainly want to welcome all of you that are here. This is our first meeting since our recess in... Thank you. I ask Councilman Davis if he would lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May we rise, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Bell.
Present.
Mayor Protim Cole-McFadden.
Present.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Moffett.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
And Councilmember Shul.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilman Reese.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we get started with most of the rest of the agenda tonight, I wanted to share with the council, with the members of the public who are present, as well as those watching, a poem that I discovered online about two weeks ago. I believe it was originally written at the Third Thursday Art Event here in downtown Durham. And I really felt that it was fitting for the place that we find ourselves in this city right now as we open up a new political season for the next round of city elections. The poet is a local dignitary, famous person here in Durham, the Poetry Fox, who has been writing spontaneous street poetry at events and gatherings in this area for over five years. Everything from kid birthday parties to street festivals to midnight masquerade revelers and Duke Hospital cancer patients. Give the Fox a word. Bam! Get a poem with that word in it. The Fox is also Chris Vitello, an award-winning arts writer and chief contributor for Indie Week. I'd like to ask the Poetry Fox to come up now to the podium here and read the poem that he wrote.
Hey, Foxy. I'd like it to be recognized that I did that without tripping on anything. Just first order of business, thank you. Yeah. I want to thank you guys for this opportunity. This poem was written at a Third Friday. And it was sort of through a partnership through the Durham Convention and Visitors Bureau that Kara Russo asked me to read it and Duke's Arts Degaters Program that Amy Yunell runs. It's sort of a great example of a public-private partnership and the kind of great cultural stuff that can come from it. So it was a busy night. How I work is somebody gives me a word and I immediately write a poem with that word in it. And I was given the word Durham. And I wrote this. Place names are nouns. People, places, and things the stern teachers taught us. But some places are really verbs because they never sit still enough to mean the same thing. Durham, the city of people running into each other on the street and starting a project or company 10 minutes later. Durham, the city of fences leaned on for a conversation over tomatoes and politics. Durham, where we trot our problems right out so we can solve them together. No nouns here, only verbs conjugating all day long. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to ask if Councilwoman Johnson, if you would go to the podium. As most of you probably know, we've lost a young man a few weeks ago in a motorcycle accident. There was a memorial service Saturday. I happened, I was able to attend very briefly. But Councilwoman Johnson has prepared a proclamation. And if you don't mind, you could present it, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a resolution to recognize and honor Umar Mohammed, who's a local activist who was killed a few weeks ago in a motorcycle accident. Are there folks here from his family? It's been kind of a busy weekend, so I wasn't sure if anyone would be able to come. Okay. There was a memorial service for him on Saturday with over 500 people in attendance over at the Haytai Heritage Center. And it really showed the impact that he's had in the community and how many people really, really valued his contributions and his work. So I'm gonna go ahead and read this and we'll make sure his family gets this resolution. Whereas Umar Musa Mohammed was born in Durham, North Carolina, on January 7th, 1987, to Joyce and Musa Mohammed. And whereas Umar attended Durham Public Schools. And whereas Umar was a local leader of All of Us or None NC, a state chapter of a human rights organization advocating for current and formerly incarcerated people. And whereas he was an advocate for the Ban the Box Movement, to have questions about criminal history removed from employment applications, advocated across the region for Spirit Houses Harm Free Zones Movement for Community Resiliency and Restorative Justice. And whereas Umar was a leader in Durham's Fostering Alternative Drug Enforcement Fade Coalition, which works to end the racial disparities of the war on drugs in Durham and other forms of police violence such as racial profiling, racial disparities in marijuana arrests, and the killings of black and brown people. And whereas Umar worked as a community organizer with the Southern Coalition for Social Justice from 2014 to 2017, where he organized clean slate clinics to clear old criminal records for hundreds of people in Durham and North Carolina. And in July 2017, he joined Forward Justice to become the lead organizer and campaign strategist in order to work on national issues through the Formerly Incarcerated Convicted People and Families Movement. And whereas Umar participated in a city of Durham Human Relations Commission Panel on the impact of the Durham County Jail on the residents of the city and shared his experience and wisdom with the community about the impact of incarceration on our residents. And whereas Umar was a member of the Jamat Ibad Al Rafman Mosque and a member of Curve Assassins Motorcycle Club and a member of the Advisory Committee for the Durham County Criminal Justice Resource Center. And whereas colleagues and friends described Umar as eager, earnest, and passionate, an extraordinary person, and an unapologetic truth teller. And he was known for his charismatic personality, his infectious smile, and courageous leadership, his love for Durham, his dedication to his community. And whereas Umar was a consistent advocate for the needs and rights of formerly incarcerated people in the city of Durham. And his voice was instrumental in the implementation of policies to require the Durham Police Department to use written consent search forms in order to reduce racial disparities in traffic stops and searches. And whereas he advocated to the world every day that people are not the sum of their worst mistakes and embodied this truth through his consistent and dedicated work to make Durham a stronger community that values all people. And whereas Umar is survived by his partner Krista, stepsons Christian and Christopher, daughter Ella Asada, parents Joyce and Musa, siblings Nikki, Hadiya, and Nashid. He will also be missed by his two grandmothers, two nieces, four nephews, aunts, uncles, cousins, and many other loved ones. Now therefore be it resolved by the Durham City Council that this city council pauses in a moment of silence in memory of Umar Musa Mohammed. That this governing body pays tribute to his life and his contributions to the community. And that this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of this governing body. And it's signed by Mayor Bell.
Thank you. Thanks, Councilwoman Johnson. That was well-prepared, well-written, real-spoken. Most of us had an opportunity. Umar really appreciated him as an individual and so question he is a person this community will miss, just as his family will miss him. I will ask, are there... We're asking clerk, do we need to vote on that? Ann?
Yes, sir.
All right, entertain the motion. It's been properly moved in second in all favor of the motion. And you can, I'm sorry. We've got new gadgets up here. Will you open the vote? Close the vote?
It passes seven to zero.
Are there announcements by members of the council? Let me make one announcement. As probably most of you know, we each year do an evaluation of our three employees that the city council hires. The city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk. We had their annual evaluations on July the 27th of this year. And today in closed session, we reviewed the evaluations with the respective employees. And as a result of their evaluations, the council has recommended salary increases for the city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk. The recommended salary for the city manager is $234,137,000... $234,137.89. The recommended salary for the city attorney is $215,368.22. And the recommended salary for the city clerk is $124,319.67. I would entertain a motion to approve those salary increases.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Madam Clerk, again, will you open the vote? Will you close the vote?
It passes seven to zero.
Let me recognize the city manager for any priorities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and welcome back, as the mayor said. You may have noticed in the council chambers look a little bit different than the last time you were here in June. Hopefully, the work done over the last month since our last council meeting are as visible on television and online as they are here in person. We now have a new high-definition broadcast-quality council chamber. Among the changes are the new LED TV lights, which are pretty bright up here right now, and room lights, which are more energy-efficient and make a big difference in the brightness of the room. There's new microphones, new high-definition cameras, a new vote board system, and larger monitors behind the council chambers that have closed captioning. Also, the council member monitors were replaced with horizontal ones and better views of the audience. The monitors in the lobby were also rewired for closed captioning and better audio. And any Apple users, product users, will now be able to use their iPhones and iPads to watch the web, to watch the web stream live. In the past, that was not possible. I do want to take just a minute to thank the many departments that were involved in this upgrade over the summer. Certainly Beverly Thompson. Also like to recognize Vivian Cruz O'Doherty of Public Affairs, Donna Maskel of the General Services Department, and our own city clerk, Ann Gray, for leading this effort over the last month. And I think it's gonna be a big improvement, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Recognize Mayor Protim.
I would just like to recognize that Umar's family just came in. And Joni, they're in the back. Good evening.
We just had a resolution that this council adopted, a resolution prepared by Councilwoman Johnson. And as indicated, that resolution will be presented to you as members of the family. But we all are offer our condolences on Umar's passing. I think all of us knew him at one point in time, have had an opportunity to meet with him. And it's no question, he's a loss for this community and as much as he's a loss for your, for your family. While he was yours, we also consider him ours also. So please accept our condolences.
And Mr. Mayor. I would like the public to know that we will be offering a resolution in memory of efface still in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements by council members before we go to the priorities by the city attorney? Was that only a priority?
That's all I had, thank you.
Priorities by the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No priority items.
Likewise, the city clerk, are there any priorities?
No items, Mr. Mayor.
In that case, we will proceed with the agenda. And I will read each item. Concerned agenda is an item. Part of the agenda can be approved with a single vote unless a council member, a member of the council, a member of the audience chooses to pull an item. And at appropriate time, we will discuss it. The first item concerned agenda is the Item One, Approval of City Council Minutes. Item Two is Budget Measures, Performance Audit, June 2017. Item Three is Capital Assets Performance Audit, dated June 2017. Item Four, Citywide Safety Performance Audit, dated June 2017. Item Five is City/County ICMA Local Government Management Fellow in a Local Agreement. Item Six is 2016 Historic Preservation Commission Annual Report. Item Seven is 2016 Durham City/County Appearance Commission Annual Report. Item Eight is 2016 Durham Environmental Affairs Board Annual Report. Item Nine is 2016 Planning Commission Annual Report. Item Ten is 2016 Durham Board of Adjustment Annual Report. Item Eleven is 2016 Durham Open Space and Trails Commission Annual Report. Item Twelve is City Code Amendment, Sunday Morning Alcohol Beverage Sales. And I'll pull that item. Item Thirteen is a resolution providing approval of a multifamily housing facility known as Daymar Court Apartments in the city of Durham, North Carolina, and the financing thereof with Housing Authority of the city of Durham Multifamily Housing Revenue Bonds. Item Fourteen is a resolution providing approval of a multifamily housing facility known as Maureen Road Apartments in the city of Durham, North Carolina, and the financing thereof with Housing Authority of the city of Durham Multifamily Housing Revenue Bonds. Item Fifteen is a pass-through agreements with Orange County, Durham County, Towne of Chapel Hill, Go Triangle Durham Center for Senior Life for multiple Federal Transit Administration grants administered by the Durham Chapel Hill Carboro Metropolitan Planning Organization. Item Sixteen is supplemental agreement number two between the city and VHB Engineering NC PC for the North Carolina 54 Corridor Study. Item Seventeen is Emergency Action Plan for Critical Sewer Main Crossing Amendment, number one, to Professional Engineering Services Contract with KF Carter Engineering Company. Item Eighteen is Correction to Water and Sewer Rates for fiscal year 2017-2018. Item Nineteen is a bid report for May 2017. Item Twenty is a bid report for June 2017. Item Twenty-One is Construction Contract with DW Ward Construction Company, Inc. for Maplewood Cemetery Improvements. Item Twenty-Two is Proposed Acquisition of Approximately 1,476 square feet of permanent right-of-way and 4,045 square feet of temporary construction easement across a portion of 1304 and 1308 Western North Carolina Highway 54, P. 135916 and 135917 from FMR Properties LLC. Item Twenty-Two is Grant Agreement with North Carolina Department of Transportation for the West Ellebe Creek Trail Phase Two Project. Item Two is Downtown Parking Garage Project Construction Manager at Risk Pre-Qualification Procedures Resolution. Item Twenty-Five is Construction Services Contract with Brady Integrated Security for the citywide security select sites slash video surveillance upgrades and implementation project. Item Twenty-Six is Amendment to Professional Services Contract with Alert and Associates Networking Division, Inc. for Phase Three of Citywide Security Project Security Improvements, Design and Implementation at Durham City Hall. Item Twenty-Eight is a contract for Athletics Booking Agent. Item Twenty-Nine is a contract with Morris and McDaniel, Inc. to conduct promotion, testing, and assessment services. Item Thirty is Utility Extension Agreement with DR Horton, Inc. to serve Southern Point Townhomes. Item One is Recommendation for Completion of Stormwater Infrastructure in Ravenstone and Stonehill Estate Subdivision. And I'll pull that item. Item Thirty-Two is a resolution authorizing the Public Works Department to develop a certified third-party permitting and inspection program and to certify qualified third-party consultants. I just noticed that I have a card here for Item Five on the concerned agenda. Charging of neighborhoods. No, I'm sorry, this is Item Thirty-One also, okay. Item Thirty-Three is Contract Amendment Number One for SW 16, 2017 Sidewalk Repairs. Item Thirty-Four is a Contract ST 282, 2017 Street Repairs and Repaving Project Award. Item Thirty-Five is a Contract SW 47D Maureen Road Bike and Pedestrian Improvements, TIP Number C 4928.
Mr. Mayor.
Recognize Councilman Moffett.
Would you pull Item Thirty-Three, please? A Contract for Sidewalk Repairs.
All right. Item Thirty-Five is Contract SW 47D Maureen Road Bike and Pedestrian Improvements, TIP Number C 4928. Item Thirty-Six is Contract SW 44D Coffin and Fletcher Road Bike and Pedestrian Improvements, TIP Number U 4726HO. Item Thirty-Seven is Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HMGP 4167-0009-R Resolution. Item Thirty-Eight is Munis Software Annual Support and License Agreement for 2018. Item Forty-One can be found on the General Business Agenda. And Items Forty-Three through Forty-Seven are items that can be found on the General Business Agenda as public hearings. I would entertain a motion for the approval of the concerned agenda with the exception of Item Thirty-One and Item Thirty-Three.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
It's been properly moved in second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? I'm sorry, Deb, what'd you say? Twelve. Will you close the vote?
It passes seven to zero.
We'll go to the General Business Agenda, public hearing. No, General Business Agenda, Item Forty-One, Property Tax Relief Deferred Loan Program.
Mayor Bell, members of council, Reginald Johnson, Director of Department of Community Development. Item Number Forty-One is the Property Tax Relief Deferred Loan Program discussed at the work session. The purpose of this program is to provide guidelines for the Property Tax Relief Deferred Loan Program designed to assist eligible homeowners whose property taxes have increased due to an impact of city of Durham neighborhood revitalization. I will stand ready for any questions that have ready to be asked.
Let me ask other, well, Reginald, let me say this. We had this item at our work session. We deferred any comments on it primarily because two of our council members left. We did hear have questions from the audience. But I think it would be better if you could present what has been proposed, if you don't mind.
Yes. Be glad to. So I would say is the presentation has been, is being uploaded. Earlier this year, end of last year, the citizens of Southside Neighborhood in particular presented before the city council and talked about the increase in taxes due to the neighborhood revitalization that had occurred. And after that discussion and presentation, the city council asked the administration to prepare a proposed deferred, opposed loan program, a proposed program to engage in some assistance for tax relief. So after some evaluation, the administration and Department of Community Development proposed a program which I'll share with you now. The city of Durham Property Tax Relief Program will offer deferred loans to eligible long-term homeowners who experience an increase in property taxes due to the impact occurring from the city's revitalization or home improvement efforts in Southside, Southwest Central Durham, and Northeast Central Durham target areas. The purpose of this program, like I said, is grounded in the strategies that were adopted by the city council relative to affordable housing. And this program proceeds out of a policy that we focus on targeted areas to assist persons with households with tax increases. And it's consistent with the goals and strategies that were adopted by the council. The proposed program guidelines were created to assist the Department of Community Development staff in administering the program. I'll first start with the borrower eligibility. The household income must be 80% or below of the HUD median income, area median income. There is no asset limitation. Housing costs must be above 30% of the total household gross income. A property tax increase must be the result of direct city investment in the defined target areas. And this does not include private investment. In terms of borrower eligibility, applicant must have resided in their home prior to the qualifying event and for a minimum of five years. Eligible homeowners must have applied for the Homestead Exemption, Circuit Breaker, Disabled Veterans Exclusion, or other available tax relief programs prior to applying for the deferred loan program. Homeowners may be approved for loan assistance for a maximum of four years with a maximum of four annual disbursements. Homeowners must have their incomes recertified annually to verify ongoing program eligibility. Eligible properties. The property must be located in a target area where increased property values are were the result of a direct city investment, whereas the property is located within 500-foot, feet radius of the investment. Revitalization projects or home improvements must have occurred between 2010 and 2015. That's inclusive of those years. The loan will have a 0% interest rate. The loan will be deferred until the property is sold, transferred, or is no longer occupied by the borrower. The loan amount will be the difference between the amount of the previous year's property tax obligation and the 2016 property tax obligation. The deferred long terms, the increase in tax obligations must be a minimum of 10%. percent. The borrower must occupy the home as their principal residence and must continue to do so until the home is sold or transferred. A deed of trust or lien from the borrower in favor of the city will be part of the loan documentation. Additional annual dispersments will increase the amount of the principal secured by the deed of trust. Additional deferred long terms, the city will look to recapture the entire balance of the loan term if the loan is sold, transferred, or if a qualifying, disqualifying event occurs. However, in the event that the home is sold, the city would not look to recapture more than what is available from net proceeds of the sale. Net proceeds are equal to the sale price minus superior liens and closing costs associated with the sale. Upon the death of the homeowner or borrower, the heirs to the property that received the loan assistance may apply for and receive additional loan assistance or continued loan deferment if the heir is income-eligible and continues to reside in the property. The total estimate in terms of cost for the program is five hundred eighty-five thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars, and this is based upon an estimate of the number of properties that are tax increase, face tax increases in the area, and also what percentage, estimated percentage of households that may participate in the program. So this is a projection. The final slide I have before you shows the target areas that have been previously adopted by council. It also shows the, the blue dots are the investments that have occurred for affordable housing within the zones, and then the additional rings that you show that are in gold are the five-hundred-foot radius from those investments. And that concludes my formal presentation.
Thank you. We have several people that have signed up to speak on this item, but before they speak, I want to ask whether there are any questions or comments by the council at this time. If not, then I would recognize persons who have signed up to speak on this item. You each have three minutes. As I call your name, you proceed to the podium to my right. Sandy Demery, Anthony Jones, Jim Savara, and Joy Mickel, in that order.
My name is Sandy Demery, and I live at eight nineteen B North Street, and I'm part of the North Street community that's, I think a lot of you know, is for people with and without disabilities to all live together and support each other. It was crap. It was all boarded up, awful-looking before it got redeveloped and renovated. So of course, our taxes have gone up, and we assumed that. I hadn't given any thought to my neighbors, kind of foolish. We've lost a lot of our renter neighbors through gentrification, and now I'm concerned about the homeowner neighbors that we have, and one of my neighbors is with me tonight. We thought, or I thought at the time, that they were going to be grandfathered in at the old tax rates, and I don't think that's what's happened. I personally support Steve Shul's new idea, I think I've heard about that anyways, about a proposal for a grant for Southside. Southside I'm a big fan of, especially after serving on the steering committee for Rolling Hills. But I also think that we need to step back and rethink citywide about tax relief. For instance, in our neighborhood, we've been impacted by both city activity as well as market activity, but we're not inside the city target area. We're two blocks over from northeast central Durham. So at that, I'll just hand it over to Anthony.
Good evening. I am Anthony Jones, and I live in this area that she's been talking about in Northwood Circle. Since this revitalization came upon us, my taxes have increased eighty percent. They said if it don't work, if it's too much, appeal. I appealed, and thanked for the paperwork, but it didn't do me any good, just the same. And as it's going now, I have no idea what to expect, and I shared this with some of the other homeowners in that area. If you're, I am retired, and my income is fixed, and you give me a piece of paper telling me how to pay my taxes, but you don't tell me how to get the money to pay the taxes. So that's the best I can tell you. Whatever you do for me, I greatly appreciate. I thank you much.
I'm Jim Savara, eleven fourteen Woodburn Road. I am come to speak tonight on behalf of the Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit, and I want to encourage you to not approve this proposal, but rather to consider how we can make it better. Durham should create a local tax relief program, and I want to credit the mayor and the Community Development Department for recognizing that there are ways that we can, that we can develop our own program, but let's do it right. There are many shortcomings with the proposed program. It is unfair for persons outside the boundaries of the three target areas, and we just heard an example of that. There are lots of cases of people that are close to those boundaries, and they don't get assistance, but let's recognize that the changes the city has made downtown and throughout the city have impacted the property values that homeowners have, and in areas that were formerly low-income, these gentrifying forces are pushing up values and pushing up the tax burden, and this is a destabilizing force. So let's make, let's provide assistance, let's look for a way to provide assistance to low-income homeowners throughout the city that are paying excessive taxes. Now, the Community Development Department proposal does not address this issue of excessive taxes, paying too large a percentage of income in property tax. It addresses only an increase. There are people who are paying a burdensome amount, not because it's an increase, they've been paying that amount for some time. Let's address that underlying problem. The most serious limitation, I think, with this approach is that it doesn't really solve anything. After four years, those high taxes are still going to be waiting for the homeowners that have been able to benefit from it. Are we going to add more loans on top of the four? I think, yeah, we need to think again about how to broaden the coverage, think about the basis for providing that assistance, and link it to income. Earlier this year, the council approved, endorsed the idea in its legislative agenda of expanding the state circuit breaker tax to cover all families, not just those that are elderly and handicapped. The principles on which that kind of program are based have not been included in the Community Development Department proposal. So let's rethink, let's include those, and that the key elements are a cap on, a cap on taxes based on a percent of income. Let's make it an ongoing program without this limit to four years, and we will, we will all benefit in the long term. By doing that, the benefits would be those for people that are fifty to eighty percent, that are, that are under fifty percent or under eighty percent of area median income. In the meantime, let's recognize the special burden that residents of Southside have been through with the massive renovation that has occurred there, and do something about their taxes from last year. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm Joy Mickel. I'm also with the Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit, and I am in favor of creating a program for helping homeowners who are having trouble with the increase in taxes due to development, especially those for Southside. However, I'm in favor of creating the circuit breaker type of program instead of a loan program. As a rule, general rule, I don't really think that giving loans to people having trouble paying their taxes is a good policy move, and I think that there is a better way that we could create a program that helps everyone in the city. I think that, I know that the housing stabilization program that Jim Savara pulled together originally was a grant program. Not sure when and how it changed to a loan program, but I think that it, with it not having any interest, the loan program not having interest in basically being probably more expensive to administer that way, why not just do a grant program? I'm not sure I understand that. I think that the council should reject this proposal and, or substitute this motion, substitute this program, this loan program, for a grant program, and then go about the work of creating something citywide, like the circuit breaker type program that Jim mentioned, and I think Councilman Shul has forwarded also to the council. I think that something that limits homeowners' exposure to two or three percent is a much better way of helping homeowners than putting it into debt, and then in four years, they're faced with the same tough choices of high taxes. And also, the fact that if we do create some type of program that limits tax exposure, we're really helping to slow gentrification displacement in a serious way. This program is a short fix. I really don't think that it's good policy to give loans to people having trouble paying their bills. I just think that, going back to the drawing board a little bit, and putting together something that makes a little bit more sense policy-wise is a better move. Thank you.
You're welcome. Let me, they were all the people that signed up to speak. I'm going to recognize persons on the council, and I have some comments, I'll make last. Recognize Councilman Moffett, and then Councilman Shul, in that order, and the mayor pro temp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that I echo some of the comments that we've heard tonight. I've had some concerns about this. This is relatively modest amounts of relief. It's really only for a small portion, it's only for the tax increase. And as loans, and not only the issues that they've talked about, about lending to people who are already in low-income houses, low-income households, but also it's expensive to administer to keep track of everything. The five-hundred-foot radius has bothered me because it's, you can live ten houses away and be outside that radius. I think that's too small. I've been troubled by the fact that it, that it has a double layer of limitation. You have to be within five-hundred feet and live within one of these areas, and at the same time, I don't want to keep sending it back to staff. So those are my comments at this time. Thank you.
Recognize Councilman Shul and the mayor pro temp.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. So I've been thinking a lot about the housing stabilization program we're going to be voting on tonight, and I've sent this, what I'm about to say here to my colleagues earlier today, and I really appreciate the work on the staff, of the staff on this over the last several months. Our staff has been trying to craft a program that meets a complicated set of criteria and also responds to the council's wishes that we've expressed both informally and formally at work sessions over these last several months. I'm in strong support of figuring out a comprehensive, efficient, equitable, and cost-effective program to keep our low-income homeowners in their homes, and I know that is a goal that all of my colleagues share. After a lot of reflection, I don't think the program in front of us tonight is the best we can do. I do think it's a really good effort, but I don't think it's the best we can do, and I'm afraid that if we vote for this program, we're going to be locking ourselves into a long-term loan program that we will, we may well regret having adopted. So to cut to the chase, I believe we ought to simply vote tonight to give the Southside homeowners grants to cover the difference between their two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen property taxes, and we should then take our time to get a comprehensive housing stabilization program right, one that considers home repairs as well as tax relief, with the advantage of having a new housing director on board. We haven't had our housing director position filled in a long time, and when we fill that position, which should be soon, that would be very helpful. I spelled out below what I think the details of this one-year grant program should be, which I'll say in a moment. I think it should be simple, it should be easy to administer, and it should be inexpensive to taxpayers. The creation of this program is the kind of problem that shows why governing is harder than slogans. We all know that we want housing stabilization for our low-income homeowners. That's, that's the easy part, is to say that. Social policy involving public expenditures to help one low-income subgroup is hard to get right. In the case of the policy in front of us now, we've got a subgroup that is, in my opinion, fairly arbitrarily defined. We have significant loan closing costs for very small loans, so the efficiency of the program is very low. We're leaving out people who are not defined as housing burden but whose homeownership is still threatened by rising property taxes. We don't have a good handle on the potential long-term costs, and we're not looking comprehensively at the best way, and this is, I think, the most important thing, we're not looking comprehensively at the best way to spend our scarce affordable housing fund dollars to help keep people in their homes. We need to consider home repair spending needs, too, and how our total housing stabilization spending should best be configured. What is the right balance between our spending on tax relief versus home repairs for low-income homeowners? Which has the best chance of keeping them in their homes over the long term? In short, I think we need to spend more time to get this right, and we're about to get soon some more in-house expertise to help us do this. We all know that any local housing stabilization program involving tax relief is another Durham workaround, a problem that should be solved at the state level. The state's elderly-disabled homestead exemption provides significant property tax relief to low-income seniors or people with a disability. Ideally, the state mitigation program would simply be extended to all low-income homeowners. Instead, Durham is trying to find our own local progressive solution, but as we do, let's try to find the right solution. So in the interim, I think we ought to go back to where this whole process began with the low-income Southside homeowners who brought this need to us in the first place. In their case, their taxes have gone up significantly as a direct result of an enormous city investment in their neighborhood, a much larger investment than the city has made in any other neighborhood. Their situation is unique. While we are figuring out how to craft the best possible comprehensive housing stabilization policy, which will include tax relief and home repairs, we need to go ahead now and provide tax relief to the one group of low-income homeowners whom we know are significantly affected by the city's enormous direct investment, and that is Southside's low-income homeowners. I propose that this assistance come in the form of a grant to those homeowners in the Southside area as described on the staff's current map, who are at or below sixty percent of the area median income. To be eligible, homeowners must have lived in their home for at least five years, and their property taxes must have gone up at least ten percent from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen. The grant would be to cover the increase in property taxes from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen, minus any tax relief already provided to these homeowners through the state's circuit breaker programs. This will be a one-year program covering the two thousand and sixteen property taxes only, and we should further direct the staff to come back to us with a comprehensive housing stabilization program during this next fiscal year, during this fiscal year, so that we can deliberate on this program during next year's budget sessions. That's my proposal, and I hope my colleagues will consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Shul. Recognize the mayor pro temp.
Mr. Mayor, I want to hear from some folk from Southside. Were you going to speak, Miss Faust? Nobody from Southside. When, when the residents of Southside came to us initially, asking for tax relief, there were a predominance of black women heads of household, people who were of low to moderate income, who because of our work there or our partnering with others were suffering because of the escalated taxes. Now, I tend now, we talk so much about racial equity. I tend to look at this through a racial equity lens, and I wonder if that group had been from some other ethnicity or race, would we be going from some other ethnicity or race, would we be going through this tonight? I am not willing to change the program that was originally shared with us by staff. However, if we want to do something later and look at the cost and other sorts of considerations, I'm willing to do that, but I'm ready to move on what staff has presented, because I don't want Durham to be perceived as a place where we don't listen seriously at the concerns of people who really need it most. Now, I know that Southside has suffered quite a bit over the years, and I think that just that location enough has suffered sufficiently, and they are now due some burden relief, and that's where I am in my walk.
Recognize Councilman Bees.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Schul, for coming forward with this alternative proposal about how to address this particular agenda item. As all my colleagues know, we have been wrestling with this for quite some time. I know that when I was first sworn into this office 608 days ago, this was one of the issues that was foremost on my mind, was the recent, with respect to the recent property revaluation, what would happen to the tax burdens for working families, the property tax burdens for working families in this city. And I think we've seen through the advocacy of the folks who are here from the Southside neighborhood, we saw some very acute examples, and that's why, Madam Mayor Protem, I am in support of Councilmember Schul's proposal, because it would provide the Southside homeowners with even more relief than the proposal that is on our agenda tonight. That proposal, which has been put forward by staff after a lot of hard work and in response to, quite frankly, a variety of opinions on this council, the, has been, would saddle these Southside homeowners with, with debt instead of providing them actual tax relief. And as I've said in other meetings where we've discussed this, I don't, simply don't understand the rationale of providing city funds to all sorts of private entities for a perceived economic benefit while being unwilling to extend the same type of public investment in some of our most longstanding Durham residents who have made incredibly deep and lasting contributions to our, to our community. And that's why I support the proposal. The other, the other thing I wanted to add here is that the, the staff proposal was designed to maximize the certainty that the city is acting within its authority here. We heard at our last work session from one of our city attorneys and his staff, that nexus between public investments by the city of Durham and affordable housing and the area in which this program would, from which the eligibility would spring, was premised on the theory that where the city puts public dollars to, into, into a community for the purposes of, of increasing the amount of affordable housing there, that it would be paradoxical, I'm getting sound effects, it would be paradoxical to allow those investments to create unaffordability in the surrounding area as a result of increasing property values. I think that, that analysis is very sound, and I appreciate the city manager's office for putting that before us, but I think it's just as sound to say that public investments over the last 15 to 20 years in the downtown core, investments that have reaped incredible benefits for this city and which members of this council were very brave to stand up for. But those investments also create areas of new rising unaffordability in neighborhoods that surround the downtown core. And I believe it would also be paradoxical for us to have said, we're going to invest millions of dollars in the downtown core in private developers and not have the ability to ameliorate the effects of that downstream once those investments reap benefits for us and once we begin to see increasing property values in that area. That's why I believe, though the argument is perhaps strongest where the city has made its affordable housing investments, I still believe the argument is strong and sustainable, that a broader area of eligibility should be applied to this program. As I've also said, I believe that grants are a much, and as Joy Mickelson said, I'm not sure, I don't really understand the logic of using debt to defray property taxes. So the last thing I wanted to add is just to echo what Councilmember Schul said about how difficult this is. I understand full well, and hear from taxpayers all the time, that essentially we are trying to short-circuit or work around a state system that is generally designed to prevent us from achieving progressive goals with respect to the property tax. But I believe that in this area, given the arguments that we will have at our disposal about public good and public purpose, I believe it would be appropriate to adopt a wider program. That's why I support Councilmember Schul's proposal to do a short-term grant program immediately for the Southside homeowners for the last property tax, and then move forward with a broader analysis of how we can do a better program going forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let me make a few comments, and I appreciate what has been said. Councilman Schul's proposal I just got this evening, so I really haven't had a chance to look at it as thoroughly as I would have liked, but I accept the comments that he's made. First of all, from our perspective, what we're talking about is fairness. We're not talking about what's equitable, we're not talking about what's equal, we're talking about what's fairness. And my wife constantly reminds me that when you're dealing with kids, you love them all, but you can't treat all of them equal, because they aren't equal. I mean, what you try to do is to be fair. I mean, you might be giving bicycles, you got four kids, you're giving bicycles to kids. You might decide that you're going to give this type of bicycle to the kid that's 18 years old. If you're going to be equal, you give the same type of bicycle to somebody that's four years old, 12 years old, 13 years old, but you don't do that. You make an adjustment. So you give a bicycle to the younger kid that has trainers on it. Now, is that bicycle equal to the others? No, it's not equal, but it's about being fair. And this is what we're talking about, at least what I'm talking about, in this issue we're trying to address, about what is fair. Now, my interest in neighborhood revitalization and affordable housing and neighborhood stabilization, it began long before I became mayor, in 2001. It really began when I had an opportunity to take a bus ride with some people who were for affordable housing, Larissa Sybil, she knows the name of the group, when we toured this, this community. And what I saw was quite evident, that we needed to do something as a city in terms of trying to help revitalize those neighborhoods that had been depressed for long periods of time, and we needed to find a way to do it to scale, not a house here, a house there, but to do it to scale. And so we took on Barnes Avenue, which is now Eastway Village, 40-plus houses. We didn't push anybody out. It was fair, willing to buy or willing to sell, but we transformed that neighborhood. We transformed that neighborhood, and as a result of that, we helped transform a part of northeast-central Durham. It wasn't everything, but you can't do everything overnight. These neighborhoods didn't get into positions they're in overnight, and you aren't going to change them overnight. We did the same thing over in Southside with Roland Hills, formerly Hayti Heritage, Hayti Community, where we just completed 100-plus, 40 apartments, mixed income, about to complete another 85. We have homeownership that's going up along that area. And we just didn't do this arbitrarily, as has been expressed, we didn't do it arbitrarily. This council made a conscious effort, that just as we were going to support downtown, we were going to support our neighborhoods, and we chose the two neighborhoods we were going to focus on, northeast-central Durham and the Southside community. It wasn't arbitrary. We looked at where the worst conditions were, and what could we do in a scalable way to make a difference, and we did that. Now, we are here in August, almost 10 months away, when the Southside community first came to us with this problem in November, and we're still trying to wrestle with it. They came to us because their issue was their property had been assessed, reevaluated, and this is not the city's doing, it's the county's doing. Everybody knows that the county makes the evaluations of all properties across, across the county and the city. They do it every eight years, now they're talking about doing it every four years. But the county made the decision that the values of not only their property, my property, every piece of property in here had a certain value on it. That was a county decision. That didn't cause the taxes to increase. That didn't cause the property taxes to increase. What caused the property taxes to increase is that the city council and the county commissioners set a tax rate, okay, that caused those properties, properties to increase. Now, we, we could have said, okay, we don't, if we don't want the properties to increase, we'll have a lower tax rate, and we could have done that. And then what would have been the result, in terms of how this city is operated, the type of services we, we provide? It wouldn't have happened. So the evaluations themselves didn't cause the problem. The problem is that because of the values, the city and the county set a tax rate that caused the property taxes to be high. This is an effort, and when I say an effort, when the city decided to try to help revitalize those neighborhoods, unfortunately, what we're having is an unintended consequence, an unintended consequence. It wasn't intention that when we revitalize these neighborhoods, that homeowners, low-income homeowners in particular, were going to have those taxes to the point where it was unbearable. That was an unintended consequence that was done because of the actions that the city council took. And as a result of that, I think we bear a certain obligation to try to mitigate that, and that was the proposal. Now, whether we call it a loan, a grant, or whatever, what we did, and I, and I'll come back and take the blame on me, because be truthful, what we did is, after we heard them, this council said, well, let's, maybe we need to get the county involved, because the county raised their taxes also, and we went to the county. And the county said, no, we aren't touching that, and all, and all the fact. Now, I understand what, I served on the Board of County Commissioners for 26 years. I understand what they were wrestling with, so I'm not faulting them. But the fact is, we're talking about taxes that, price, tax, property taxes that have increased because the city has a tax rate and the county has a tax rate. So if you're going to solve the problem, are you also going to solve the county tax rate? Well, we asked the county to do it, they aren't doing it. So, you know, if we, if we were really saying we're going to deal with our problems only, we don't talk about the amount of taxes increased that has done, been done because of the city did. But the staff took this proposal, and they went back and spent time with it. And not only did they say, okay, we've bridged the gap between the city tax increase, but also the county tax increase, and we pay for it. That was an argument then, this is what they, what they came back with. That, to me, that's fairness. It's not necessarily being equal, but it's fairness. We caused the problem, so we're trying to mitigate the problem, and that was one of the proposals that we had. You know, I've heard talk about circuit breakers, go to the state, to the general assembly to get something done. Who thinks we're going to get the general assembly to do anything with a circuit breaker? Nobody on this council thought about, thinks about it, because we, we know, you know, for me, you deal with what you can control, and that's what we're trying to do. We don't control the general assembly. We do control the property tax rate that we set. We do control which neighborhoods we're going to choose to invest, invest in. These are things that we control, and this is the guidelines under which we're trying to work, when the staff came back with this proposal. At the work session, someone raised a question, in fact, I think it was Councilman Davis, well, are we really being fair? Are we, are we treating people equal? What about the people who don't live within this, this particular area? How can we justify that? Well, you know, the administration looked at this, but also our attorney looked at it. And if Shelley is here, I would like you to speak to that point, as to what is the legal basis that you've derived at, as to why we could target these particular areas for what we're talking about doing, and share that.
Mr. Mayor, member of council, Sherry Zan Rosenthal, senior assistant city attorney. When I met with staff in spring of this year, what I asked them to do, and that we then set up jointly, was a meeting with the GIS staff, and they did an analysis which showed that in each of the target areas that you have designated and have worked in for a number of years, there has been a disproportionate increase in the tax valuations as compared to either the median or the average for the rest of the city. And so at that point, I felt that whichever way the administration and the staff decided to go as far as choosing one area versus another, as long as we could have that statistical showing that there had been a disproportionate impact, I felt confident that I would have grounds to defend whatever direction you and the administration decided to pursue.
Well, the, the point is, thank you, the, the point is, I think what the administration has done, they've come back with a program that is physically responsible, that is legally sound, and it's something that if this council chooses to do, can do. Now, I've heard a lot of talk about putting loans on low-income people. It's a 0% loan. I've talked about what happens after four years. What happens after four years? If the person still wants to be in the program, and they still qualify in terms of income and all the criteria we set, they can continue that. There's no money out of their pocket. It's a 0% loan, a 0% loan, a 0% loan. I mean, that's, that's what it is. And the only way that, that it gets paid back, if it gets paid back at all, because the person lives in the house forever, and they continue to qualify, they don't have to pay it back. It gets paid back if, for whatever reason, they decide to sell their home. Now, a home tends to be our biggest asset, tends to be our biggest asset. So if a person decides that, for whatever reason, they want to sell their home, because they want to take the advantage of the increase in the property value, and they get a higher price, then they've got a lump of money, and all we said is, that's fine. But since you've also been able to have this tax-free money for a certain period of time, we at least like you to give the city back what it invested in, no more than what we asked, but if, if it's enough, you pay us back. But that's the only, only requirement that they have, so it's a 0% interest loan. The reason it's four years is because the county is now thinking about reevaluating property every four years rather than every eight years. So the point is, four years from now, if the county does a reevaluation and the property value changes, then the tax owner will be entitled to come in on the same circumstances they had, the state where they are, and apply for a loan again. But again, for, for me, it's about fairness, it's physically responsible, it's legally responsible. The other programs that are being proposed, we haven't had any assessment of that. We don't know what it's going to cost. We don't know what kind of burden it's going to be. This council's not going to administer. The people going to administer are the city manager and his staff. You know, so they should be the ones to come back and tell us what is the cost going to be. They've done that on this, this proposal. So if you're talking about doing something different, to me, you've got to have a similar type evaluation. But why hold up those residents who first came to us with this problem almost 10 months ago, to say, we want to look at a much broader program? They aren't mutually exclusive. You could very easily adopt this program that's been proposed and still have the staff go out and do the study that has been proposed, and come back and see what it comes up with. But don't penalize those persons who've been waiting, who came to us with this concern 10 months ago, and say, we're going to put it on hold, no, we're going to change it, we're going to call it a grant, which, again, hasn't been vetted by the administration. I don't know if we can give grants like that or not. You're talking about giving grants to Southside. The reason the staff came back with northeast-central Durham was because it met the same criteria that Southside did. So you go give a grant to Southside and forget about the people over in northeast-central Durham where we've caused these problems, and say, oh, well, you got to wait until we do a further study, till we do a county-wide study. And another thing about the proposal I saw is that eventually, the proposal says, we've got to go to the county, to see if the county would buy into it. You ain't going, that's not going anywhere. The county's already told us that they aren't interested in doing that type of program for a valid reason, and I'm not getting into whether they should do it or not. So again, I, I think we have a valid proposal by the administration. I think the questions that have been raised about alternatives are alternatives that should be vetted by the administration, to see if they can come back with something that fits that criteria. But I think we have a program that's sound, sound physically, sound legally, and will work, and it's not something that's going to cause a burden on those property owners who choose to participate, who choose, and nobody's forcing them, they might decide they don't want to participate, but if they do, it's not going to cause all these negatives that I've heard spoken about here this evening. So that, there are my comments on that. I would just hope that we take some action on this tonight. I don't care what we do, I, I care what we do, but we need to take some action. So we... So, we stop leaving these people in limbo who have come to us originally for this program. And I'm not just talking about Southside. I'm also talking about the people over in Northeast Central Durham, which is a targeted area that we had gone into, that the staff has recommended be a part of this program. Our motion's in order.
I move that we adopt the plan presented by staff.
Second motion.
It's been properly moved in second. Further discussion on the motion. No further discussion. Recognize counsel.
I'd like to ask our city attorney for a question about the rules of procedure. At this point, would it be appropriate to make a substitute motion, or to vote on the existing motion and then make an additional?
If a council member is interested in making a substitute motion now, would be a time to do it.
Okay. I would like to make a substitute motion that we adopt Councilman Schulz's plan to give grants to Southside homeowners now for the, I'm sorry, we have new microphones. Can y'all hear me now? All right. Something's wrong with my microphone. How's this one? Okay, great. Thank you. I'd like to make a substitute motion that we adopt Councilman Schulz's plan to provide grants to the Southside homeowners for the difference between their 2015 and 2016 taxes now, and asks staff to continue to develop a comprehensive property tax grant program for the rest of the city.
It's a second to the substitute motion.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. We're now voting on a substitute motion. If there are no further questions, Madam Clerk, I would ask if you would open the vote.
We're voting on a substitute motion. We're voting on a substitute motion. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Will you close the vote?
It passes, something is wrong with my mic. It passes four to three, with Mayor Bell voting no, Mayor Protem Cole-McFadden voting no, and Councilmember Davis voting no.
Thank you. Let's move to the next item, please. Item forty, item forty-three, your own business agenda, public hearings.
Thank you very much. Michael Stock with the Planning Department. Before I begin, I would like to state that all required notification for all the planning-related public hearing items before you tonight have been performed per state and UDO requirements and are on file. Text amendment TC 140003 is a set of updated and reorganized standards as detailed within your agenda packet and presented at work session related to the current design district zoning regulations. Design district zoning districts were implemented within downtown tier in 2010 and Ninth Street Compact Neighborhood Tier in 2012 to establish a version of form-based zoning regulations. Staff has reviewed how the design district regulations have functioned by compiling comments received from staff responsible for development review, the development community, and the general public. Based upon this, staff has developed a set of proposed revisions that do not change the fundamentals of the district's intent or regulations, but have added, deleted, or revised standards to better achieve that intent. Staff has utilized focus groups and has met with various other departments, the Parents' Commission, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission, Downtown Durham Inc., sinking input and comments. Drafts have also been released for public review and comment. We've held public meetings and have also been reviewed by JCCPC in January 2017. The Planning Commission recommended approval, 14-0, of the text amendment at its April 11, 2017, meeting. Earlier today, staff had met with county commissioners to provide a presentation at their work session similar to the one that council has received, and the county commissioners directed staff to discuss with council following three items. First was to consider removing self-storage facilities as allowed use in the downtown design district. Second was that council consider adding Rigsby Street to the list of streets with ground-floor residential use limits within the newly proposed Section 1613D3 ground-floor use limitations. And thirdly, explore developing low-impact development strategies within right-of-way, such as rain gardens, enhanced landscaping, and such. As for number one, I'll just kind of briefly discuss those with you. As for number one, JCCPC recommended not removing this use from downtown, but to require ground-floor uses other than self-storage or a mixed-use type strategy, and that has been proposed within this document before you. This was further revised at Planning Commission to allow a minimal amount of office space related to that use at the ground floor. Unless directed otherwise, staff will continue to look at, and we are continuing to look at, uses within design districts as we take a look at further station areas and implementing design districts in those areas. As for number two, the areas proposed within Section 1613D3 were those proposed by DDI and the focus groups, but staff doesn't see any issue in including Rigsby Street. That would be extending from Morgan to Gear. And I can discuss number two if you have further questions with that. And then for number three, staff supports considering how new low-impact development strategies can be implemented within the streetscape, but it does require much more analysis and coordination with other departments such as Public Works and Transportation Departments. And we have already identified this topic for further discussion when we take a look at adopting design districts and the other station areas. As a reminder, city council will be required to take two actions for this item tonight. The first will be vote on the appropriate statement of consistency, which is attachment B in your packet. And the second action would be the actual vote on the ordinance itself, which is attachment A, also A1 through A6, also in your agenda packet. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. The public hearing is open. I will first ask other questions, comments by members of the council. Recognize counsel Moffett.
Could you say a little bit more? I didn't quite underst, I don't know whether the shadow, you can hear me, but if you can say a little bit more about Rigsby?
Sure. So, what is being proposed in that section that I referenced? And there's a map to it, and if you have your packet open, I can lead you to exactly where we're talking about. If you go to attachment A1, and it's actually the last, very last page on A1, and you'll see a map there, and that's probably the best way to go about it, is that this is an area, you'll see downtown loop is highlighted, and that the main street and Foster, kind of Blackwell Street axes are highlighted. And that's where the proposal is to limit residential uses on the ground floor, still allowing residential uses on all the other floors, but to encourage more active uses on the ground level or street level, non-residential, non-parking also, so commercial activity, office activity. County commissioners were supportive of that idea, but they also felt that Rigsby Street would be a worthwhile component of this strategy also. They felt that Foster and Rigsby were very much tied together. So, they asked staff to bring that as a proposal to you tonight.
And does staff have, I understood your comments about self-storage. If I understood them. What you were saying about self-storage as a use in downtown is that currently, this proposal now includes, still includes it with retail required on the ground floor, but with an allowance for the required office to be on the ground floor.
That's correct. It's not removing prohibiting self-storage. It's adding a limited use standard that would require a different primary use on the ground floor, with the exception of a bound 20 by, around 400 square feet of office for that self-storage use on the ground floor.
And does staff recommend that approach?
That was the, for self-storage, well, that was the approach that we took based upon what we heard from JCCPC. We did broach that approach of prohibiting self-storage completely for downtown, and the direction we thought we received from JCCPC was to not prohibit it, but to encourage a more mix of use, that self-storage can be an appropriate component for downtown development. So, we went with that strategy. But we heard the alternate request from the commissioners today.
Right. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Are there other questions by members of the council? Recognize counsel Schulz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, there are two excellent suggestions, well, there are three suggestions for the future here, two I were particularly concerned to me. One is the multimodal TIAs in design districts, and the other was new kinds of trash and recycling receptacles in design districts. How will these things move forward? They're not in this set of changes, so what would be the process for moving them forward?
Very good question. So, for multimodal TIA, we are exploring that now. When we're, we, just for a little background, those items came up as we were going through these, and there's so much of the apple we could bite off at one time without bogging down this process whatsoever, taking on the street design cross-section standards was enough for even this project. But we felt that multimodal TIAs and taking a look at enhanced trash handling management were interesting topics that popped up. The multimodal TIA we have on our list to try, to work with, actually, we've been talking with Go Triangle, they're interested in that, and also, we have mentioned it with Transportation Department to look into that kind of evaluation analysis-type packet as we move forward with developing any additional standards for the future transit areas. And as a refresher on that, when we take a look at those future transit areas, and I think this was brought up at work session, or at least clarified at work session, I believe, we anticipate around 90% of these standards to apply in those areas also, but we understand that when we take a look at those other transit areas, there might be unique instances that pop, that occur, that need to be addressed just for those areas, but also incidents such as multimodal transit analysis that might be required, that should be maybe applied throughout all the design districts, such as even downtown or Ninth Street where it already applied. For trash handling, that was a topic that came up, and there's actually, we've been recently working with General Services, and I believe General Services is partnering with DDI, and if General Services here needs to correct me, please do so. They are doing a pilot program of doing a little more automated or remote sensing-type trash handling, so you know when to go pick up the trash instead of having to service it every day and taking a chance on it. And it's going to become more important when you have those public trash facilities in these other areas in terms of utilization of resources, sending trucks out, and manpower out to service those areas. So, that's where that came from.
I think it won't be too long before we're going to have a self-driving dumpster that's going to drive that, you know, or something. Thank you. Could you explain the changes mentioned on pages five and six of the memo regarding open space? Wasn't sure I understood what it meant.
Item E.
I'm sorry, my notes don't show me that much.
Okay. Just the open space requirements?
The changes in the open space. Yeah.
Okay. So, part of this, this proposal is implementing an open space recommendation from the downtown open space plan that was recently adopted by council, I believe, a year or so ago. And within that plan, it recognized that there should be some amount of dedicated open space for larger development sites, and those were identified generally around 80,000 square feet of new development on sites, I believe we have it for three and a half acres or more. And that's just being consistent with that policy direction given from that plan. There are parameters. We've added specific parameters for that open space requirement, and there's even a special use permit option in there that would allow for, if there's some innovative design of open space that we're just not thinking of, allow that to be considered.
I think that's a great change. I appreciate it. The heightened density changes, how would the changes that you've talked about in this, that you're writing about here in the UDO, affect something like the Solis Ninth Street development in relationship to its neighbors to the east across Ardell Street? Are you with me there, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, you have this big development apartment block on, between Ninth and Ardell. And then across Ardell, you have some small houses. Would this, how would this, would this affect that relationship at all?
Not substantially, and that development was actually proposed even prior to the design districts. That was done under a development plan, rezoning mixed-use development. So, I believe that is support one zoning in the compact district, which has reduced heights than core, but might not, this might not reduce the heights much significantly. I don't, can't say for certain, but I can imagine it's going to drastically change that.
Okay. Okay. Well, that relationship worries me sometimes, not just there, but in other places, and, you know, I hope you all will look at that as well, and that the JCCPC will think about that.
And we've, we just recently had, just for your benefit, meeting on Patterson Place, and we did actually a charrette with stakeholders and residents in and around Patterson Place, and you might remember getting an email on that or notification on it. And we got some really good input on location of, or suggested locations of different sub-districts and intensities and where that goes. And we plan on doing that in all the station areas, and we're getting a lot of good feedback on that.
Right. I mean, I think if I was a person that lived on Ardell Street, and that big building came, I mean, I understand, you know, you're living in a design district, and you've got it, and we want densification there, we're expecting transit to be there, the neighborhood endorsed it and so forth, but I think if I lived there, I would want some sort of step-back in height and, you know.
And we do maintain those step-backs. There's an initial podium height, and the changes don't get rid of any step-backs to achieve your ultimate height.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Are there other comments by members of the council? We have one person that has signed up to speak on this item, Bram, like Nick.
Hello. Bram Luke nine thirty-five seventeen, Rosa Sharon Road, Durham. My purpose of me standing up to speak today is to commend the Planning Department. I had talks with them within the past 30 days regarding what would have been an unintended consequence of eliminating single-family residential in the Support Two District, which is often residential neighborhoods, thus requiring only commercial development in some areas that would, in some areas that are definitely residential areas. They were very receptive of those concerns, worked diligently, were very responsive, and crafted language that allows for residential use in the Support Two District when it's adjacent to residential use or zone. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Let me ask, are there other persons who want to speak on this item? This has been a public hearing. Let the record reflect, no one else asked to speak. I would credit, hope the hearing be closed. Madam Speaker, before the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Recognize counsel Moffett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to echo those comments. The Planning Department has been exemplifying itself, I think I used the right term, but they've just been great at reaching out to the community, incorporating comments from the public, and working hard to bring all the stakeholders to the table, and it's often reflected in the comments we receive here. So, I very much appreciate that. Madam Mayor Protem, I heard your motion. There were three items that they raised, and I would ask to, I'd be happy to second the motion, if we could amend it, just to say that we, at this time, that we're approving the item with the self-storage issues as recommended by the Planning Commission, which is ground-floor, ground-floor retail allowed in the?
It's what's currently in your.
Okay. So, what about Rigsby Street? What's currently?
Rigsby Street is not that, again, yeah, those two items were brought up actually just today, so.
Oh, right. I'm sorry. The Board of County Commissioners went something different than, okay. So, then, forget my first item, please. The second item would be that we would, that Rigsby Street would be included in the area that where ground-floor residential would not be allowed, just that item, actually. So, that's accepting, I accept the department's statement that to work on low-impact, low-impact development in the right-of-way. Did I have that right?
Yes.
That that requires more study?
Yeah.
And that that can come back at a later date?
Absolutely.
And I think that the Board of County Commissioners idea include Rigsby in that more, where you went to the street level more active, I think that's a great idea. And... more, where you went to the street level, more active, I think that's a great idea. And so I will ask that inclusion.
So what is the motion we're voting on?
The motion would be to approve the item, but include, while including Rigsby Street in the area where ground level residential is not allowed.
And that's within Section sixteen one three D three. And we'll, we'll make that amendment and get it to the clerk's office. And before we even do that motion, we would need to do the statement of consistency first based upon the new way of doing things, so.
Oh.
Does something to add, Pat?
So I'll move the consistency statement.
Wait. Did you have anything to add?
If I might add a point of information to the modified motion, I'm sorry to do that so late. Mike mentioned this briefly, our recommendation, and I think this is consistent with what the Board of Commissioners indicated, was Rigsby from Morgan to Gear. There's some city property at the south side of Morgan that we're looking to do parking along. We wouldn't want to create a nonconformity there.
Thank you. Certainly, I would incorporate from Morgan to Gear into my statement.
I'll take my statement back.
So is the motion now for consistency, is you making that motion?
Yes, sir.
Someone second that motion?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
Passes seven to zero.
And then I will move that approval of the item incorporating the recommendation of Board of County Commissioners to include Rigsby Street from Morgan to Gear as an area where ground floor residential is not allowed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Madam Clerk?
I have a question.
Recognize Mayor Protem for a question.
They might want to check the spelling of Rigsby.
Absolutely. We will.
We don't want the wrong street.
Understood.
Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item is item forty-four. Consolidated annexation for four thousand Danube Lane.
Good evening, Jacob Wiggins with the Planning Department. Requests for utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, a future land use map amendment, and a zoning map change have been received from Marlene Coulter for a nine-and-a-half acre contiguous parcel located at four thousand Danube Lane. If approved, the annexation of the site will become effective on September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. The applicant has requested an initial zoning designation of planned development residential ten point zero zero zero, and the site is currently zoned residential suburban twenty. The development plan associated with this request commits to a maximum of ninety-five residential units in a multifamily setting. The site is designated as low to medium density residential on the future land use map. In order to accommodate the proposed PDR ten designation, the applicant is requesting to change that designation to medium density residential, which allows a range of six to twelve dwelling units per acre. Some key commitments on the development plan include the aforementioned ninety-five residential multifamily units, access points to the site, riparian buffers at a maximum height of thirty-five feet. Public works and water management departments, as part of the utility impact analysis, determined that the existing City of Durham sewer and water mains have capacity to serve this project. And the Budget and Management Services Department performed a fiscal impact analysis, which determined this request would be revenue positive immediately upon annexation. Staff determines that these requests are consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies, and recommends approval and the adoption of a consistency statement. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have at this time.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. The public hearing is open. I would ask first of the questions by staff and members of the council. Recognize Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this working now? Yeah, sounds like it. Okay, great. Jacob, I had a question. I have not seen yet a case like this where an applicant has asked, hasn't asked for a direct translation of the county zoning. Can you just explain what the options are? I thought that they were required to ask for a direct translation, just because I had never seen something else before.
Sure. Yes, there's two cases, or two options. You can ask for an exact translation, or if someone submits a formal rezoning petition to go along with that, as they have done in this case. And so in doing the latter step, then it'll go to, the request will go to the Planning Commission for recommendation before coming to this body.
And do they have to go through all the same processes as they would with a typical rezoning?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that a question?
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions by members of the council? If not?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I didn't quite understand what you said, Jacob. I thought I understood what we were talking about, but now I don't. If we were to approve the measure tonight, did I hear you to say that they would need to, in order to get the rezoning they're asking for tonight, go to the Planning Commission?
Jacob Wiggins with the Planning Department. No, my apologies. So they, they've already gone to the Planning Commission for recommendation on the zoning map change.
Okay. So here, we're here to do both the annexation, consider the annexation and the rezoning at the same time?
Correct.
Great. Thank you, sir.
I recognize Dan Jewell and Kim Griffin, signed up to speak on this item. Each have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council. I am Dan Jewell with Coulter Jewell Thames. I'm here on behalf of my business partner, Ken Colter, now deceased, seven years, and his wife, Marlene Colter, with me here tonight. She's hard to see, she's small in the corner here, and her son, Martin Colter, who is an intern landscape architect in our office and has been working on this project with us. Also here is Kim Griffin, as I said. Let me explain why we're here. Ken and Marlene purchased this property over thirty years ago. Ken often related me the story of how he outmaneuvered Gary Hock in acquiring it as a blocking move. Gary wanted to expand Independence Park to the east, and eventually extend Ben Franklin Boulevard through the site all the way to Old Oxford Road. Ken, though, had different ideas about that. He wanted to protect Cub Creek, which runs along the eastern side of this property, and the bottom lands from development. Some of you may remember that Ken was one of the original founders of the Triangle Land Conservancy, Triangle Greenways Council, and did the New Hope Creek Open Space Plan back in the eighties. Ken had walked Cub Creek many times and was impressed with the fact that there was an intact riparian corridor from Carver Street all the way to Eno River. Remember, this was in the days before we had riparian buffer and flood development rules, stormwater rules, designated open space on our future land use map, and tree coverage requirements. So Ken was so adamant that this be protected, he and Marlene bought the property, and they have sat on it now for thirty years. Marlene is now eighty, and has decided it's time to sell the property to help with her and her family's retirement. She has two primary goals. One is to create some value, which of course, we know that's one of the reasons we're here. And the other is to rezone with a specific development plan that guarantees preservation of the sensitive areas of this site. We had a neighborhood meeting back last spring. We heard four specific requests from those neighbors, that we limit the height of the building to thirty-five feet, which we have done, that we provide a landscape buffer along the northern side of the property, where one was not required, which we have done, that we extend the sidewalk along the frontage of the property, which we have also committed to, and that we provide a bus stop for the children who are waiting for the school bus to wait at, which we are also committing to do. So on behalf of Marlene, Ken, and the family, we respectfully request that you follow the Planning Commission's recommendation. And I would also like to say that after consultation with Marlene, due to the twenty-one children that the staff report expects we will add to this project, we would commit to an eleven-thousand-dollar contribution to the Durham Public School Systems prior to approval of the site plan, which represents a little over five hundred dollars per school kid. And I will get that exact wording to the, to the planning staff. Thank you.
You're welcome. Recognize Kim Griffin.
I'm Kim Griffin with Griffin Associates Railtors, eighteen sixteen Front Street, Durham. I first met Ken Colter in nineteen seventy-seven, when I did my first development, and he convinced me not to develop the land that went halfway into the Eno River, but to incorporate it so that we would have a trail that goes from Guest Road to Coal Mill Road, and that people could walk on it. And so when Marlene wanted me to sell the property, I was naturally very excited about it, because he's one of the people that helped me when I first started in real estate. We are basically down to two serious potential developers. One, both are going to use housing finance, agency financing. One is considering senior, the other is considering family, and this site would meet the criteria if it is properly zoned. The big objection we've had is the time that it takes to get property rezoned. And by moving forward with this tonight, I think you will assist affordable housing as well as the Colter family. So I would appreciate you supporting this.
Thank you. Let me ask, is there anyone else that wants to speak on this item? This being a public hearing item. Let the record reflect, no one else asked to speak. I would encourage the public hearing to be closed. Matters back before the council.
Move the item. Second.
It's been properly moved and second.
Jacob, could you just walk through the sequence of the motions, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sure. Jacob Wiggins, the Planning Department. So there, there are two motions for this item. The first motion contains the utility extension agreement, the annexation petition, and the consistency statement. The second item will contain, or I'm sorry, the second motion would contain the future land use map resolution and the zoning ordinance.
I still second.
Still two, still two motions.
I'll move the annexation agreement, the utility extension, and the consistency statement. Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
I'll move the future land use map changes and the, what else do I need to?
Be the zoning map change.
And the zoning map change. Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote. Move to the next item. Forty-five.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Pat Young with the Planning Department. Wanted to briefly introduce you to a new face, new to you at least, Ms. Jamie Sonyak. Jamie's been with our staff as a senior planner for just over six months, has presented a number of cases to the Planning Commission, but this is her first time before you, and you will be seeing her going forward. Jamie is a very experienced planner. She's a licensed principal planner in New Jersey, which is where she's from, the only state who licenses planners, and is, has a wealth of experience, has been a great addition to the staff. So I just want to briefly introduce Jamie and turn it over to her for this case.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jamie Sonyak with the Planning Department. A zoning request has been received from M R E C Brightleaf LLC for approximately thirty-four acres at three two two oh Flat River Drive. The subject site was zoned planned development residential three point nine nine zero by the council on June fourth, two thousand one. It was case P zero zero dash zero five. The approval involved six hundred and seventy-eight acres with this track twelve area designated as a school or townhouse. The development plan also committed to the construction of the Northern Durham Parkway from Sharon Road through the Brightleaf Track, which has been completed to Flat River Drive. The applicant seeks two amendments. First is the elimination of the commitment to construct a portion of the roadway from Flat River Drive South, but the hundred and twenty-foot right-of-way dedication will remain. And second, the applicant is proposing sixty-five single-family units, which requires a zone change from PDR three point nine nine zero to PDR one point nine zero two. The applicant also seeks a comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use map designation from low-medium density to low-density residential to coincide with the zoning request. Key commitments, as shown on the associated development plan, include site access points, tree preservation areas, project on new buffers, and uses limited to single-family residential development. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this case by a vote of thirteen to one at their May ninth, two thousand seventeen, meeting. And staff determines that this request is consistent with the comprehensive plans and other adopted policies and ordinances. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you again. You've heard the staff report. This is a public hearing. The public hearing is open. I would ask sort of questions, comments, members of the staff. Recognize Councilman Jewell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there a graphic commitment for the trail easements on the existing site plan? Or I wasn't quite sure what the situation was with the trail easement.
The existing conditions map shows a greenway easement through the property, and as also shown on the development plan, which is sheet oh two, it's also highlighted there, existing one hundred foot public greenway easement, and it's in the southeastern portion of the property.
Thank you. I was just wondering, in the summary of development plan, this is a thirty-four acre site. In the summary of development plan, it says that seventy-two percent impervious surface consists of seventy-nine acres, and I wondered if this was just a typo. I think it actually may have come from a template that was for maybe the next item or something like that. So you all might want to look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Those were my two questions for staff. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there other questions, comments? If not, we have two persons that have signed up to speak on this item. Sean Jeko and Patrick Biker. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Bell, Mayor Protem Cole MacFadden, members of the city council. My name is Patrick Biker, and I live at two six one four Stewart Drive. I'm attorney with Morningstar Law Group in Durham, and I'm here tonight representing L-Star Management, the developer of Brightleaf at the Park, for this down zoning from PDR three point nine nine down to PDR one point nine zero two. The main issue in this zoning map change is the removal of a developer obligation to build a segment of Northern Durham Parkway. To look into the historical context of this obligation, which stretches back over twenty years, our community back then was embroiled in a controversy about a road called Eno Drive. And Eno Drive eventually transitioned into a project called Northern Durham Parkway. I think Mayor Bell and Councilmember Moffett will recall that I had a front row seat for those events. More recently, and I think wisely, our local and state-elected leaders saw fit to reallocate all the money from Northern Durham Parkway to the East End Connector, and we see that construction going on today along NC one forty-seven and US seventy. I bring this up because it has been my privilege to work on Brightleaf at the Park for many years, initially assisting my former partner, Jack Markham, on this fine neighborhood. In fact, I recall driving former city council member Diane Catatti through Brightleaf, and her remarks that this development was well-done, with a walkable elementary school, as well as great recreational amenities for the residents. Fast forward to August of two thousand seventeen, and the requirement for Brightleaf at the Park to build a section of Northern Durham Parkway, after our public sector leaders have abandoned that project, makes no sense. Please keep in mind that all of the right-of-way has been dedicated for Northern Durham Parkway within Brightleaf at the Park, but to build a road to nowhere that will inevitably require maintenance dollars from the City of Durham does not represent wise policy. Furthermore, it is important to recognize that Brightleaf at the Park was a failed subdivision, and L-Star purchased it out of foreclosure. After that purchase, L-Star invested hundreds of thousands of dollars to bring inadequate streets up to city standards, and to address the complaints of new residents, so that the city did not have to do that. In closing, since the City of Durham and NC DOT have moved on from Northern Durham Parkway, it is only fair that the same standard apply to this neighborhood. For all these reasons I have discussed, along with the positive staff report, the vote of the Brightleaf homeowners, one hundred and eighty to thirteen, in favor of this item, and the thirteen-to-one recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission, we respectfully ask for your approval of this agenda item. Our team, which includes Adam Ashbaugh from L-Star, Tommy Craven, our lead engineer from Priest Craven, is here to answer any questions you may have, or to provide you with. Priest Craven, is here to answer any questions you may have or to provide you with further background on this item. We thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Sean Jeko.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and honored council members. Thank you for hearing my voice. My name is Sean Jeko. I live at 1705 Creighton Hallway, which is in the Brightleaf community. My family and I have lived in that subdivision since 2010. As you know, L-Star and Emrec Brightleaf are petitioning to make changes to an agreement penned with the city in 2001 in the case P-00-05, and I'd like to provide an alternative point of view on the matter. There seem to be several issues at play in the request, but I'd like to focus on two: should the next portion of Northern Durham Parkway be built, and who should pay for it? L-Star, Emrec, Brightleaf seem to be making the following argument: Currently, Northern Durham Parkway is a road to nowhere. Extending this road could create a hotspot for crime. Therefore, L-Star, Emrec, Brightleaf shouldn't have to pay for the road extension. L-Star, Emrec, Brightleaf have also submitted evidence to suggest that the residents are in support of this rezoning request. That was actually at the Planning Commission meeting. However, the two entities seem to have been less than forthright with their evidence. In a presentation to the Durham Planning Commission on May 9th, 2017, Mr. Tommy Craven of Priest Craven &amp; Associates and Brooke White of L-Star, Emrec, Brightleaf submitted a letter purportedly from the community HOA endorsing L-Star, Emrec's position. I have a copy of that letter if you'd like to review it. There's at least one problem with this letter. The letter lists members of the Brightleaf Neighborhood Watch Committee in a way that suggests their endorsement of the land use change. But at least two of those people, Felisa Scott and Delithia Lloyd, and possibly all of them listed on the letter, had no idea such a letter existed or that their names were being used to endorse its contents. But back to the two issues at hand, should the road be built? Possibly. I'm not versed enough in the topic of road construction and crime, and I defer to the experts on that matter. Should L-Star or Emrec Brightleaf pay for it? The fact of the matter is that the road is in the comprehensive plan for Durham, and it will become a reality one day, and that means someone will have to pay for the next phase of Northern Durham Parkway. Either L-Star, Emrec, Brightleaf, or the citizens of Durham, I'd urge the council to carefully consider the rezoning requests being made. This is not a question of safety, as L-Star, Emrec, Brightleaf would have you believe, but a question of fiscal responsibility. As it stands, the expansion of the road is funded. However, if L-Star, Emrec, Brightleaf is released from fiscal responsibility, then the city will have to find funding elsewhere, possibly diverting funds from other NC dot projects or through tax increases, neither of which seem like attractive options to Durham's residents. If L-Star, Emrec, Brightleaf wants to live into the motto posted on their website, "Do the right thing and do it with passion," then I suggest the company place the full-dollar amount of the Northern Durham Parkway extension in an escrow account so the extension can be fully funded when the time is right. That, Mr. Mayor, and honored council members, is doing the right thing. Thank you for your time, and thank you for considering this alternate point of view.
You're welcome. Are there other persons that want to speak on this item? Before I come back to the council, let the director reflect that no one else has to speak on this item. Recognize the planner.
Yes, just for point of clarification, I wanted to correct the typo that was in Attachment 7, Summary of Development Plan. It should be 29.1% or 10 acres of impervious coverage.
Is anyone on the staff to speak to the road issue?
Mr. Judge, is there? There is. If there's a question.
The question is whether it's funded or not funded.
Yes, Bill Judge with City of Durham, Department of Transportation. The road is in our adopted Metropolitan Transportation Plan as well as the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, but it is currently not funded. We would anticipate that it would be constructed through the state TIP funding project, the remainder of the road, and thus far, it's not currently funded.
Recognize the Mayor Protem.
Mr. Biker, Attorney Biker mentioned two very dangerous words, Eno Drive. Tell me about how that correlates with Northern Durham Parkway.
That's a great question, Mayor Protem, and I could take three hours instead of three minutes to answer that question. It was a, I believe Nick Tennyson described it as a toxic project, if I recall.
That's what we.
And working with Councilmember Moffett back when he was involved with the Eno River Association, numerous community leaders, great people like Wayne Cash and Donna Deal, we worked out a compromise called Northern Durham Parkway. However, I did talk to former mayor, former NC DOT Secretary Nick Tennyson to ask the question that Bill Judge just answered. I wanted to confirm my understanding that all of the money that at one point in time had been reserved for Eno Drive and then Northern Durham Parkway was in fact allocated completely to the East End Connector.
Okay.
And we all see that project every day on US 70 and at 147. It's a huge project. It took all that money. Accordingly, it's many years, I would say decades, until there's any funding available, based on my experience with state transportation funding. So I welcome that question. I certainly don't mean to belabor the point, but there is no funding for that project, and we as a community have moved beyond it. I think that's a fair statement.
I know that Eno Drive is definitely dead. That's the one we opposed.
Well, I recall one of the first things that I did when I became mayor was convene both proponents, opponents, members of the Chamber of Business Community in the committee room to specifically talk about an alternative, and that's where Eastway Expressway got its genesis. But having said that, we're back on the point now. If there are no further questions, I'll call the public hearing to be closed. Matters back before the council.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Recognize, Councilman Schul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have another question.
Sure.
I'm still not clear about, maybe, Mr. Judge, you can maybe help me a little bit. So it's in the transportation, it's in the Metropolitan, tell me which plans it's in again.
It is in the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, which is the, in the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, but it is not currently in the funded state TIP.
Okay. Have we applied for any funding through the state TIP for this road?
It is on the project list that we're considering for the next round of spot 5.0 submittals.
Okay.
Some of the indication I've gotten preliminarily is it doesn't look like it's scoring very well, but that'll be a determination that the NPO board will have to make whether to submit that project forward for consideration in spot 5.0.
Okay. In this round of spot 5.0?
Yes.
Okay. And, thank you. And then, I'm not sure who can tell me this, but how many feet, and I may have, this is probably in the memo, and I missed it, and I apologize, how many, the length of this road that the developer was committed to build and would not be building, and Patrick, you may know that as well as...
My name is Tommy Craven with Priest Craven &amp; Associates. The length of the road from Flat River to the property line that would not be built is approximately 900 feet or so.
So a fifth of, less than a fifth of mile.
Yes.
Okay.
However, all the right-of-way has been dedicated.
And would be continued.
At 120 feet wide.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Recognize, Councilman Moffett.
Yes, I want to start by thanking the citizen that came to speak and raise the The issue about letters that might have been submitted to the Planning Commission, I haven't seen those, and the people that you spoke of as having not been signatories are not here tonight, and I don't really know how to address that, but I really want to appreciate you for coming and bringing that forward. I wanted to talk for a moment, so that, the Northern Durham Parkway is, there is, it is a key component in the resolution to the Eno Drive conundrum that we had. There were seven components. The largest and most expensive one was the East End Connector, and Caleb Southern, actually, who hasn't been mentioned tonight, was the one who really pushed this total compromise package. So eventually, Northern Durham Parkway will build, it will be built. It is an important connector that should connect from, I think it starts at 70, but it may go south of there, but goes all the way up to, crosses the Eno at Old Oxford and connects into 501, so that eventually, people coming south into Durham and headed towards Raleigh, towards the airport, will not have to actually drive through downtown Durham in order to do that. And we will like that when it finally happens. That's being said, the case tonight is, we can either vote it up or vote it down, but it changes the overall density of the project, downzones it to a much lower density. And then the second aspect of it is this aspect of whether or not the paving should be done or at least paid for. And I accept the arguments, I look at the site, it's a very complex site to develop, and I accept the argument that it, that with the, all of the different easements on it and the topographic issues, that it, that the lower density is appropriate. I have lived in the country here in North Carolina. I have seen paved roads where there were no residential along it, and I have seen that they, people tend to like to drive their cars there, hang out late, and typically, the ones that I've seen were very trashed. So I can imagine, if I lived in this community, I would not want a piece of road that was to be unused, to be paved and left sitting there. The developer, when they acquired the property, did acquire it with this requirement on it, but with a higher density. So I guess the question could be raised is whether or not with the lower density, they should be expected, or could be expected, to come up with the funds required to do all of the things that they've committed, that were committed previously, the commitments that came with the property. And I would, I am comfortable that with the lower density, that the most appropriate thing to do is to, for them to dedicate the property but not pave the road. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are there other comments? Thank you, Councilman Moffett. If not, the public hearing is closed. Entertaining a motion on the item.
Do you need a consistency statement first?
That's the second. Jamie Sonjak, Planning Department. You would vote first on the land use designation, and that would be for low, to change it from low-medium residential to low-density residential, then the consistency statement, and then the zoning designation.
So I will move, I think I have this correct, I will move to accept the staff's recommendation, to approve the staff's recommendation for changes to the comprehensive plan.
Second. Is that all he has to do?
The property moved in second. Any questions? Not, Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Open the vote? Close the vote?
And now I will move, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. I'll now move the consistency statement.
Second. It's been properly moved in second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Open the vote? Close the vote?
It passes 7 to 0. It's the second vote, the second motion is the consistency statement and the zoning together combined in one.
I only made the one motion, so I'll make another motion now, which is simply to accept the staff's recommendation for the new use zone.
Second. It's been properly moved in second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Open the vote? Close the vote?
It passes 7 to 0.
Move to item 46, zoning map change for Carolian assisted living of North Durham.
Good evening. Jamie Sonjak again with the Planning Department. A zoning map change request has been received from Tony M. Tate Landscape Architecture for 14.34 acres at 4112 and 4214 Guess Road. The subject site is Zoned Residential Suburban 20. The applicant requests to change this designation to Plan Development Residential 3.906 in order to construct a 56-room congregate care facility. There are no changes to the future land use designation. Key commitments, as shown on the associated development plan, include site access points, building and parking envelopes, tree preservation areas, project boundary buffers, and design commitments for the building. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this case by a vote of 14 to 0 at their April 11th meeting, and the staff recommends that this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted policies and ordinances. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. The staff report has been made. Public hearing is open. Other questions first by members of the council. Here on 9, I want to recognize Robert Stinson and Pamela Porter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Thank you very much for hearing from us this evening. My name is Robert Stinson, 4901 Waters Edge Drive, Raleigh. I'm with Carolon Assisted Living. I am here to speak in favor of the project, of course, very briefly, because it's getting later. Carolon, for those of you who don't know us, is a local North Carolina company. We provide assisted living and Alzheimer's services through 21 licensed facilities in North Carolina. A Carolon facility is residence for the frail elderly. The typical resident is an individual in their 80s who needs some help with activities of daily living. We also provide secure care for those suffering from Alzheimer's disease or other forms of dementia. We are not a medical facility. Carolon is not a developer in the traditional sense. We are owners, and so when we come to a community, we stay. We still operate every building that we've developed since we were founded in 1996. We also try to serve the needs of the entire community, as unlike many new assisted living facilities, Carolon accepts the state assistance and Medicaid programs for low-income seniors. There is a strong need for additional assisted living services in the northern part of Durham. If you took the 5-mile ring around the site, there are today 5,782 seniors age 75 and older. That population is projected to grow over the next five years by 20% to just under 7,000 seniors. At present, in that same circle, there are only 296 licensed beds to serve that population, and only 20 of those beds are dedicated to the care for those suffering from Alzheimer's. The Carolon project will add up to 84 beds, and up to 48 of those can be dedicated to caring for those with Alzheimer's disease. We have been looking for five years for a suitable location in this part of town, and we think we have finally found an excellent one. As noted, the Planning Commission gave us unanimous approval. We also, while it's not required by the ordinance, we did hold a neighborhood meeting on July 11th to meet our new neighbors and answer any questions that they may have had. We had the unanimous support of those in the neighborhood as well. So we respectfully request your support, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Porter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, Pam Porter, 5714 Williamsburg Way. I work for Tony Tate Landscape Architecture. I'm the landscape architect on this project, and I'll be happy to answer any technical questions you may have on the plans. We did the development plan for this.
Thank you. Other questions of the developer by members of the council? Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak on this item? This is being a public hearing. Let the director reflect that no one else has to speak. The public hearing is closed. Matters back before the council. Move the item.
Second.
What do you need? Do you need a consistency statement?
Yes, again, Jamie Sonjak, Planning Department. The first motion would be the consistency statement.
I move the consistency statement.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote? Close the vote?
It passes seven to zero.
And, and the second item would be the zoning map change?
Second.
It's been properly moved to second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote?
It passes seven to zero.
Move to item, item forty-seven. Zoning map change for Andrews Chapel.
Good evening, Jamie Sonjak with the Planning Department. A zoning map change request has been received from Jared, Jeremy Midland, Land Development, MI Homes of Raleigh LLC, for a hundred and fourteen point one-seven acres located on the south side of Andrews Chapel Road, east of Del Webb Arbor's Drive. The subject site was Zoned Planned Development Residential Four Point Seven Nine Three, approved by council on June first, two thousand and fifteen, for residential development with up to five hundred units. The applicant is requesting two changes from that plan. First, they are seeking to enlarge the building and parking envelope for the townhouse component, component, and the second, they are seeking an increase in the number of townhome units. No other changes are proposed. The zoning district is consistent with the low-medium-density residential future land use designation, and there's no change to the recreation, open space, future land use designation. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this case fourteen to zero at their April eleventh, two thousand and seventeen meeting, and staff determines that this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted policies and ordinances. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Other questions by members of the council? This is a public hearing. If not, we have Chris Mail. Mail?
Good evening, Chris Mail with Eden's Land, a civil engineer and project manager for this project. We're at two-three-one-four South Miami Boulevard in Durham. Don't have a lot to add what, what Jamie said. This was mainly, the change is mainly to provide a larger envelope for townhomes on the proposed development site, and an increase in the proportion of townhomes to single family. Jeremy Midland from MI is also here tonight, and we would be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Other questions of the developer by council? Recognize Councilman Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't have a question, I just wanted to thank you for your accommodation in the outlet on Andrews Chapel Road. That was, that was a big deal for the folks that live near there, and I appreciate your willingness to do that.
You're welcome, thanks. Anyone else that wants to speak on this item? Let the record reflect, no one else has to speak. The public hearing is closed. Madam Clerk, for the council.
I'll move the consistency statement.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote?
It passes seven to zero.
I'll move the ordinance, admitting the unified development ordinance.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote?
It passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move now to the items that have been pulled. Item twelve, city code amendment. Mr. Minister Zaid, this is item twelve. City code amendment, Sunday morning, alcoholic beverage sales. You have three minutes.
Thank you all. Thank you, councilmember, for this privilege. Very briefly, on item twelve, I wanted to say something before I said it. Councilman Julian Johnson and Councilman Steve Shue, we really appreciate your presence at the commemorations and remembrance services for Brother Umar. You showed us something as councilmen and councilwoman, your concern in our community.
I was there, too.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
I was, I was there also.
I miss you.
I mean, just because you raised a question.
We all heard about this solely eclipse that is in the process of August the twenty-first. I'm concerned about the conspiracy of silence here in Durham in the religious community regarding item number twelve. I know it's campaign time, and it's not an issue to be brought up, alcohol in the community on Sunday morning. There's no Sunday school, children running down Main Street seeing people drinking, and sometime maybe be partying on a Sunday morning. Have we given up on a religious holiday? Have we given up on a religious day, Sunday morning? Or how are we in this conspiracy of silence? We already have concealed weapons with no permits, mixed with alcohol on a Sunday morning. We got a blood eclipse in Durham. Crime is increasing, and blood is on the street. Mr. Tom Bonfield, you made a statement on August the fifth, and it was reported in the Virginian Pilot. That's in my hometown, Virginia. Also in the Herald Sun, you stated that there's no mind, there's no program that we can come up with that can deal with the mindset of the violence in these conditions that is going on in Durham. And I agree with you one hundred percent. In my conclusion, about forty-five seconds, I come to bring you the handwriting on the I understand, Mayor, Mayor Bell, you can't do everything overnight, but this ordinance that you have already passed, it happened overnight because of money, tax revenue. To hell with the church on Sunday and what people think. We're gonna do what we want to do. Now on Sunday, the blood is gonna continue on the street. As long as you renounce your Ma'arakato, your civil obligation as a civilized individual, you will continue to see blood in the street in Durham. In my conclusion, I would like to say this. Those of you who have sat idly by in silence and seen them pass this audit, the blood is on your hands.
We have the item before us. I would entertain a motion on item.
I'll move the item.
It's been properly moved to second. This is further discussion.
Yeah, I wanted to find out from Mr. Baker, what does this ordinance really do? I, I thought. I could get mimosa and stuff like.
Sorry, what, what's the?
Explain what that bill does.
The bill, basically, these ABC establishments, I'm sorry, this is not, the, these AB, it's not. The ABC establishments are.
No. You're right, the mayor's, you're right, you're other right, there you go.
The mayor, great, the mayor's microphone works better. So for the establishments, ABC establishments can start to sell alcohol at twelve on, on Sundays as the law currently, I'm, I'm getting there, as the law was, but the law, as recently amended, allows localities to amend that to, to bring it down to ten o'clock. So all retail establishments, restaurants, should you pass this ordinance, they can start to sell alcohol at ten o'clock in the morning on Sundays. That's the extent of the ordinance.
Yeah. I just want to address my friend. A pastor in Durham gave me his opinion, and I, I don't know if that's based on all the pastors, but he encouraged us. He encouraged me to vote for it. Well, at ten o'clock, most of the people that I know are in church anyway, and I would like to think that they are not gonna stay out of church just to go get a drink. I should hope not. But I certainly understand what you're saying. Thank you.
I forget, was there a motion?
Yes.
Was it the second?
It was.
It's been properly moved to second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote?
It passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll now move to item thirty-one. Item thirty-one reads, recommendation for completion of stormwater infrastructure in Ravenstone and Stonehill Estates subdivision.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I pulled this item, it's a public works item. I see Mr. Joyner coming to the microphone. The staff has put together a, so they brought this item to council a couple of years ago in two thousand and fifteen, I believe. Well, they've actually been to us several times, it has a long history, and they've done an admirable job of trying to follow staff's, excuse me, council's directives and really work with the people in the community. So I asked this to be pulled, and I think you have a number of speakers as well, is that right? Okay, so I'll wait, I'm sorry, I'll stop and let the speaker speak and then start again. But I do have a proposal to change the way that we do assessments here.
We have seven people, persons that have signed up to speak on this item. I'll call your name, you can go to the podium to the right. Lindsay Edge, is that person? Joanna McMillan, Millen? Michael Kirk, Cam, Kirkay? James O. Williams? It says Charlene C. Keith Davis? And John McLean? Now, is there anyone else that wanted to speak who was not signing up, whose name I did not call? Okay, if you proceed, just state your name and address again, please, and you have three minutes each.
Mayor Bell, members of the council, my name is Joanna McMillan, and I live at one-thirteen English Ivy Drive in Ravenstone. And I would like to just, I wasn't planning, well, we're not on camera anymore, so this isn't gonna be as embarrassing, but one of the things that has been talked about is the assessment to the homeowners. One of the things that I wanted to bring up is when I bought my home, my husband and I bought our home in May twenty-eighth of two thousand and eight. We were both living a different, more comfortable life at that time through several job changes, losing of jobs. We've gone anywhere from making forty thousand dollars a year to twenty thousand dollars a year less. Right now, to avoid losing our home, we are in bankruptcy, and we are working through being able to save our house. So any kind of assessment at this time, being due to the fact that the trustees take the majority of our money from our check, because we had to tell them what our expenses were versus what we were making, we really don't have any extra money left at the end of our paycheck to be paying any additional fees for something that wasn't necessarily our fault to begin with. So that's all I really have to say, and, you know, I just appreciate you thinking about this and, and the assessments that are gonna come forward. Thank you.
Good evening to the council. Mayor Bell, good to see you again. Mayor Protem, Paul McFadden, good to see you again. Unlike most of the folks that.
Could you state your name, just?
I'm sorry, thank you. Michael Kirkew, I'm the HOA president for Ravenstone. I live at two-two-one Hillview Drive. Unlike most of the folks who come to talk to you, we're not asking for help in Ravenstone. Need to be clear, Durham is asking for Ravenstone and Stonehill Estates help. I'd like to share with you that our community, as of this morning, it has a three, a thirty-five point six percent delinquency rate on HOA dues alone. This number indicates that a large percentage of our families are still living paycheck to paycheck. The additional more than two thousand dollar bill for the city's errors is not insignificant. What we are faced with is not how to share in paying a bill that the city has incurred, it would not be proper to seek a fair and equitable solution to this problem, which shares the penalty for the city's mistakes, fifty-fifty. What we face here is what is right and what is wrong. The city ordered the developer to write the specific verbiage in the bonds and to pull out enough in bonds to cover any potential failure. The developer did as the city instructed. There were sufficient bonds to cover one hundred percent of the work after the failure. However, the verbiage the city required ultimately meant that the insurer was not required to pay on the bonds. Since the case began due to the city's willful neglect, they literally instructed the DPW not to work in our neighborhood because it would bring the appearance of an implicit accountability and responsibility. The costs approximately tripled. Still, with services not rendered to our citizens, we have paid more than nine million dollars in city taxes, but none of the buses we paid into come into our neighborhoods. No city parks were built anywhere near our community, and the American Tobacco Trail is still too crime-ridden for our residents to safely use. Now, there's a new train coming to town, nowhere near our residence. Most importantly, until this summer, our streets were treacherous to travel on, and our drains would not function until there was at least two inches of rain in the streets. I ask that tonight, you don't consider how easy the bill for you or for me might be to pay. I'm confident you all have wine bottles or heirlooms that exceed the price tag of this water retention project. The only entity at fault in this debacle has been those in our elected and employed government. As the judge ultimately stated, the city is solely responsible for the failure. I ask that you do what is right, not what is easiest. I ask that the city of Durham pay the bill so we can all move on. Thank you.
Hello, City Council, my name is Lindsay Heggie. My husband and children and I live at three-one-two Rondale Drive in Ravenstone. We just moved to this neighborhood last year. When we moved, we were given some information that said that there was a kind of pending, I don't even think the word, word was lawsuit, that there were some possible charges that could be incurred to us. That we were given the information, we looked through them, and by reading what we could find, it seemed like obviously there had been some disagreement. Clearly, it would be worked out in the sense that if there were city roads that needed work done on them, we pay city taxes, they would be covered. That's part of why we pay city taxes. My husband and I have lived in Durham since two thousand and ten. We chose to move to this area because we have a special needs daughter, and she needs to be closer to the public schools that have the special needs programs. Where we lived in South Durham, because of the way that the school system functions, because of the socioeconomic climate of South Durham, they don't have the Title One pre-K programs that our special need daughter needs. And we choose to keep her involved in public school because we think it's important for her to have the same opportunities as some other children might have in different kinds of private education that she's not able to get. And so we chose to continue to stay in Durham County, in Durham City, because of that. We could just move over a couple of streets, and we'd be in Wake County, where the schools could be argued better, they could have different things for our child, but we love Durham. We have a child, an older child, who goes to school at a charter school in downtown Durham, because we want her to be involved in a community that supports socioeconomic diversity, that she gets to come home and tell us about working in their garden plots at their school, so that they can share them with their neighbors that are homebound in different parts of downtown Durham. This is part of the reason that we live in Durham, because we love it here. So to us, to now be told that the city taxes that we pay as city residents, the reason that we continue to live in Durham, the things that we love about it, are now going to incur us additional costs that have never been a part of, from my understanding, any charges that have ever been brought to specific residents of a neighborhood, that, again, from my understanding of this, and I'm new to this, I understand, I've only been here for about a year, that anytime that there has been a, an issue with a bankruptcy from a developer, that the residents themselves haven't been asked to incur the same costs that we are being asked to incur. And I, I'm left to wonder why, why now, why this neighborhood are we being asked to cover these costs that, from all of my understanding, are something that should be the city's responsibility, that we as city residents who pay our taxes should be able to have safe streets for our children to play in, should be able to have safe streets for our cars. safe streets for our cars to drive on and not be injured, not have their bottoms drug out from them from large potholes, not be concerned about buildup of rainwater. I would just ask that you consider for our families that choose to live in Durham because we love it, that we now not be penalized for that same choice.
Greetings to the mayor. Greetings to the city council members. My name is Keith Davis. I live at 1008 Grand Demer Court. Been living in Ravenstone for about two years now, and I'm a disabled vet. I'm on a fixed income. So, mostly, when everybody else gets their raises in money, I'm fixed from year to year to year unless I get a COLA raise from the government. That usually doesn't happen, but every three, four years, as you'll probably know. So, this assessment, when I got, when I bought my house, it was the streets that was an issue. So, my team of real estate agent and my lawyer actually had it with the last homeowner has to pay for the streets in my area. So, that means I have to still keep in contact with my previous owner. So, when the bill finally does come through, I can try to get them to pay some of the, up to whatever point, up to five hundred dollars, which would be agreed upon. Anything extras on me. Now, we have the storm drain situation that's coming up now. It's really hard for me to afford, with my medical care, going back and forth to the doctors, having surgery, to actually come up with more money to sit and try to pay this extra bill, which is unforeseen. Also, the fact that, again, from my understanding, that no other community except for Ravenstone and Stonehedge has had this assessment put on them, out of, believe, fifty-two communities? So, that, that's, it makes it a little daunting. It's like, if there's a reason why, we'd like to know what the reason why is. Because this money coming out, like you said, I'm on the board as well. And I do see a drop in HOA due fees, and we have to cover all of this. So, that means people are not moving into the area. People are not paying the HOA dues. So, that becomes a major problem when this should have been taken care of. The community was built in two thousand five. There was a bond issue that was, which was rendered, and the city lost that due to how the bond was written for the developer. The developer went bankrupt, went belly up. That is not the residents' fault. The residents should rely on the city to protect us and for litigation such as that. That's why we have the city. That's why everybody comes out, the state inspectors, everybody comes out to look at the water, the sidewalks, and the sewers and all that to make sure we are protected. Thank you.
Hello, City Council. Hello, Mayor Bell. My name is Jonathan McLean. I live at 12 Red Sage Court within Ravenstone. Amongst echoing what all of my neighbors have already said, you know, ten years plus of neglect, lack of public services such as plowing in our neighborhood for when, you know, weather does come in and cause issues with our bus routes and all of that, you know, it was spoken about earlier today about fair versus equal, right? And I think that's what this comes down to really today, is that what happened in Ravenstone, it's unfortunate. It is. But right now, we're asking the residents, our neighbors, to foot fifty percent of that bill. Well, that's equal, when you think about it, right? Fifty percent from the, from our local government, fifty percent from our neighborhood, neighbors. But it's not fair, right? And so, I've already heard some motions being passed on what's fair, what's versus being equal. I just wanted to make that note because, you know, I'm a new father of a nine-month-old. I, you know, I unfortunately budgeted poorly when it comes to diapers, formula, you know, baby visits, you know, these things were a big old kick in the budget for me. And I'm not saying, you know, I'm going to be bankrupt and unfortunately, as some of our residents are. I have the, I'm fortunate enough to be able to pay these. However, it's going to hurt, you know. My wife and I, we don't get much time to go out anymore. That's because of time as well as financial constraints. My student loans are still hammering on me, and they will be for the next six years. You know, I'm paying around twelve hundred dollars a month in just that alone. But, you know, adding this on top of it, I mean, let's break it down. Seven hundred and fifty dollars to me is six months of baby formula. It could be eight months of baby diapers. It's also a year's worth of my wife and I going out on dates, let's say like once a month, and we spend like, you know, sixty, seventy bucks. We go grab dinner and a movie. That's gone. Now, granted, we might try and stretch that out across the years, but I mean, the total is the same. So, I wanted to just go ahead and sum up there that, you know, it's unfortunate what's happened, and, you know, it's not a, it's not a conversation of equal. It's a conversation of fair. And it shouldn't be placed onto the neighbors or the residents of Ravenstone community. Thank you.
James Williams.
He had to leave his wife. It's not well.
Okay, Charlene C. Is there anyone else that wants to speak that hasn't spoken, didn't sign up? If not, we're going to bring this back to the council. And I'm going to, I have some comments I'm going to make, but I'm recognizing, Councilman Moffett.
Thank you. First, I wanted to ask two questions of staff, just based on the comments that we heard. Mr. Baker, we heard one of the speakers say that the problem with the bonds was specific language that the developer was instructed to include by the city. And I wanted to just ask you if you concur with that.
I'd ask Don O'Toole, who actually was a litigant, and there were, one of the attorneys that was litigating the case. I'll let him start, and I may add to that.
Don O'Toole, City Attorney's Office. That is correct. The language on the bonds is language that was provided by the city.
Okay.
And that language was also at issue in the declaratory judgment case.
Okay. The second question I have for you, just, the statement was that the judge in his, in his findings said that it was solely, that this problem was solely the responsibility of the city.
That's not accurate.
Okay.
The case was solely interpreting the language in the bonds. And as I've told council before, that was one federal judge's interpretation. I believe the city had a very strong argument that the bonds actually covered more of the unfinished work than what the judge found, but the judge didn't agree with the city's argument. We had an expert in the construction industry that testified through affidavits what the language in the bonds meant to him as a professional engineer, as a developer, and he completely agreed with what the city said. So, it came down completely to bonds that the city had used for decades and the way a judge interpreted it. We've since changed the bond language.
Thank you. There's many, many issues at play. These were just two that were raised. Mr. Joyner, I have a question for you. I heard the comment made that no other, there's been no other failed subdivision, I'll use that term, it wasn't what was used, but I'm paraphrasing, where people have had to pay for any improvements. And I know that the staff has worked really hard for, to find developers to come in, to use bond proceeds and whatever assets remain in a failed subdivision, to get it worked out so that doesn't happen. But my recollection is there's been at least one where there was an assessment, which was a lower dollar amount but a much higher percentage than what we're talking about here. Is my recollection anywhere close to accurate?
Your recollection is correct. Robert Joyner, Public Works Department. So, the subdivision question was by the name of Dunwoodie. It was a twelve-lot subdivision. They did not have enough securities to complete the street. There was a street-only assessment for that project, and it was a little over three hundred dollars per house.
Okay. So, the, so, Mr. Webke, thank you for being here. It's actually a stormwater case, but this is, as we can tell, is a much bigger issue. You don't have to get up. It's not a, I'm not going to ask you a question right now. But that's why I'm turning to Mr. Joyner, because he's shepherded through the earlier part of the case with us. And so, but thank you for being here. The, in two thousand fifteen, that's when council considered the first ordering the pavings. Is that correct?
The pavement was ordered actually earlier than that. We went through, excuse me, you're correct. Two thousand fifteen was the year it was ordered.
So, in two thousand fifteen, we took our first, first of all, I feel your pain. Let me just say that. It's been a long time. When I first joined council, I went to my first coffee with council over in PAC One, and there was a whole presentation there about these issues. And they're still going on. So, I absolutely feel your pain. And we struggled with, I completely understand the perspective, this, the city should, it's all the city's responsibility. I also understand the perspective, this is the homeowner's responsibility. What can the city do to help? If that's not your perspective, I totally get it. So, where we are is that we started out, the council in two thousand fifteen, which did include all the people up on the dais today, that council said, it did include me, fifty-fifty. And that was on paving. But that wasn't final, but that was our sort of initial. And so, based on that, the staff has brought forward now stormwater on the same, well, looking for guidance from the council. And in looking at this, I've really struggled to wrap my head around all of the issues and to go, well, what's really equitable here? There's, we have, in these two subdivisions, and they're lumped together, I assume, because it's the same developer. Is that right?
So, they were lumped together because it's the same developer, and the lawsuits that went forth were between two insurance companies that were present in both subdivisions.
Okay. So, they're sort of linked together. And in these two subdivisions, there's, as I understand it, there's three separate cases. In Ravenstone, there's eighty-five lots which have finished streets but unfinished stormwater. In Ravenstone, there's two hundred and twenty-one additional lots that have unfinished streets and unfinished stormwater. And in Stonehill Estates, one hundred and eighty-seven lots with unfinished streets and unfinished stormwater. So, if I'm a homeowner, if I'm a home buyer, and I go out to these, one of these subdivisions, and I pick out a lot, and I think, and to me, I reasonably, I think it's, I don't have, I don't question the reasonableness of thinking, hey, the streets aren't done yet, but they're going to get done, and I'm going to buy a home, and my money is going to help pay for these streets. It didn't happen. Stormwater is even a little harder, because streets right out in front of the, right out in front, the stormwater facility might be two blocks away. And so, depending on where I bought my lot, based on the fifty-fifty split on, for both stormwater and paving, I might be assessed over three thousand dollars, or over twenty-two hundred dollars, or just under three hundred dollars. And it seems sort of random to me. So, and I, so, what I've done, I worked on this, thought about this, and I said, well, I want to do, I think, I can't get to zero. I'm sorry, I can't get to zero. What I got to was, is that the eighty-five lots, I did a little rounding here, but the eighty-five lots that have stormwater only, I said, well, excuse me, for every lot that has stormwater, where a stormwater facility has to be repaired, that we would, in my proposal, we would assess every home three hundred dollars. And for every lot that has paving that has to be repaired, we would assess twelve hundred dollars. That comes up to a total of six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. So, that you don't care about. What you care about is twelve hundred dollars and three hundred dollars. The city cost climbs to a million and a half dollars. That would be our share. It would be seventy percent, just over seventy percent. Now, on these assessments, the way they're currently conceived, is that they would be overtime. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Over how many years?
I believe the proposal, eight years.
Eight years.
Yeah, eight years, zero percent interest.
And then, if, of course, we went up. And then, over eight years, if they're, if people are unable to pay them over eight years, they remain as a lien on the property. Is that correct? And under the way they're conceived, they would, that lien would be satisfied only when the property was disposed of.
On the sale of the property.
Right, on the sale of the property.
But hopefully, we wouldn't get into a lien situation.
Right. We don't, we don't want to get into a lien situation. Right. So, I could go through the whole language. I could get through all the numbers. And I, but I'll spare you that and just say that that is my substitute proposal for a fifty-fifty split, which is what we're looking at right now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let me comment. You know, this is so, to me, so analogous to what we were talking about earlier with trying to help the homeowners on Southside. And this gentleman said it. I mean, it was in the back of my mind before he said it. It was in the back of my mind when I saw your proposal. It's about fairness. It's about fairness. It's not about treating people equal. It's about fairness. And I looked at your proposal, Don, and no matter how you came out with three hundred dollars and fifteen hundred dollars, the bottom line is, you're willing to take the city from fifty percent to seventy percent of the cost. I didn't get the rationale for it, but that's what you're willing to do. You know, I think the city ought to eat the whole bill. I mean, that's really what I feel about it.
That's what I do.
I think they'll eat the whole bill. I think it's, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not asking for that. Fairly. I'm not, I'm not asking for that. But we're talking about fairness, okay? And we're talking about what's equal and what's not equal. And we had the same discussion earlier when we did Southside. And you weren't willing to spend four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, as the staff had proposed, over four years for that development because you wanted to look at something else that's going to be cheaper. But now, you've decided that you don't want to, you think the city shouldn't do fifty percent, they ought to do seventy percent. You haven't given me a rationale why. And you've made the numbers work out, but you haven't told me why. Why didn't you take it to eighty percent? Why didn't you take it to ninety percent? There's no rationale in here for what you did, other than the fact that you felt that the city ought to pay more. And so, why should the city pay more? Because was the city wrong? And we've heard some indications here that the city was culpable in this. And I'm not taking anything away from our staff. I think they've done an excellent job of bringing us to where they are. But we had a final arbiter on this issue. They've given us their best recommendation. They've done it thoroughly. They've studied it. But now, we're talking about what do we want to do? I think we ought to pay the whole thing. And I think we do it because it's fair and because of the city's role and where, what got us to where we are. I mean, you did the numbers. These people spent about three-plus million dollars in property taxes. I'm not questioning that. You showed me how you did it. They spent about, and the question is, what did they get for it? And, you know, we provided the services. They had police protection, fire protection, garbage protection. They got something. I'm not saying they didn't get anything. But the fact is, they spent that amount of money on taxes on streets that were unreasonable to be in the neighborhood. So, my sense is, if you're going to go seventy percent, seventy percent, go a hundred percent. And, you know, leave it at that. So, that's where I am on this, and I appreciate the numbers that you've done. As I said, I don't see the rationale for why you went from fifty to seventy. But you got a good number. You got a good number. It's three hundred dollars for the people who have the stormwater piece, and it's fifteen hundred dollars for a lot for people who have the paving and stormwater piece. That's what you got. But I'm saying, you know, I could have said, do eighty percent, do ninety percent. I'll do a hundred percent, something. Mr. Mayor. I recognize whoever wants to speak, Councilman Johnson and Councilman Shule, and the mayor, Potem, and Councilman Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if someone could illuminate for us why the fifty-fifty split was chosen in the first place, and if there are circumstances that have changed to this point, that would give us a reason to go to a different split.
Well, there was detailed conversation with staff and council back in two thousand fifteen, a series of work sessions and city council meetings. And for the streets in these two subdivisions, it was agreed that there would be a fifty-fifty split. Now, that can be changed tonight if that's council's decision.
Sure.
I think it was the council's decision at that point that that's what they viewed as fair.
Okay. So, I guess I'm not clear from either the mayor's proposal or Don's proposal why a fifty-fifty split now seems unfair. So, if one of y'all could... Okay. But I'm not asking you. I'm asking them. Thanks.
Well, I said my rationale for it. My rationale was that I was there when we did the fifty-fifty. I understood that. But I've given additional thought, which I'm entitled to, just like everybody else is entitled to. And I've come to say, well, why are we going... going 50 to 70 percent? Don has explained his rationale for it. My rationale is, in terms of fairness, in terms of what the people have been put through, the time involved in it, and what they've gotten in terms of what they've been paying in taxes, Don's proposal says the city puts in $450,000 more. I'm saying, in my opinion, we ought to really treat it fairly and pay the whole bill. That's, that's it. I mean, no, no other rationale behind it.
Thank you. Don, I don't understand your rationale either.
Right. So, I, I did want to just address that, which is, first of all, the most significant change since 2015 is the makeup of the council. So, the, the second thing, though, is that, like, as the mayor said, we all have an opportunity to continue to consider our situation position. So, one of the reasons why, why 70, the question was asked, why 70 percent, why not 100 percent? And the answer was, I remembered how difficult it was to get to 50/50 in 2015, and I didn't think I could get it further than 70 percent. So, I, I, I may be well wrong on that. The second answer was, is that we have assessed, I did think about the fact that we have assessed Dunwoodie Estates, that there were people there who did have to pave to help repair their streets, and that, that while the dollar figures here are significantly more, the percentages are significantly less. So, I was trying to find the balance of what we've done with other people in the same situation, with what I thought council would, might be amenable to doing, and to what I thought was reasonable and, what I thought was reasonable and fair for the people in the community. I don't know if that helps.
Thanks.
Councilman Shule, and then, Councilman Reese, and then the mayor Proton.
So, I guess I have a question for you, Mr. Mayor. Are you saying that you want to, are you talking about, when you say, pay 100 percent, are you saying for the stormwater? Or are you saying, go back and rip up what we've done on the roads as well? And go back to, you know, are you, are you saying, on the item in front of us now, or are you also saying, go back to the, to the road assessment?
What I'm saying is that the staff recommendation is, here's what the total bill is going to be. I mean, Don just gave you the numbers. The total bill to repair a stormwater paving for those two developments is 2.159-plus million dollars. That's the, that's the path. And the, the initial path we were on, well, the city would pick up half of that cost, and the residents would pick up the other half. And that's, that's, that's what I understood. What I'm saying is that, why not pick up the whole piece? Don came up with 70 percent. And he came, he told you why, at least he's being honest with you. He wanted, he wanted to do something better than 50, he didn't think he'd get much more, so he stopped at 70. And his numbers worked out to the $1,500 and $300. I'm, I'm saying.
So, you're, you're saying for, you, you want to do this for both the roads and the stormwater?
Yeah, I'm doing, yeah, the stormwater and the paving. It's, you know, it's 2.159, if you're talking about doing something, I mean, you know, you, we can always compromise. We can say, okay, just do the paving, and let the residents pick up the stormwater. But what we know is that everybody doesn't have that situation. Ravenstone has 85 lots with unfinished stormwater only. They've got the paving done. But the other two, so, require the stormwater and paving. I mean, that's, that's what the staff report says. And again, my, my knock isn't on, the staff did what, in their best wisdom, they did. They brought it back to us at the time we were looking at it. We said 50 percent, 50 percent. And the staff has brought to us today how it would look at 50/50. Our colleague has looked at it, and says, well, not 50, why not 70? And I get to 70 because I think that's about all this council might do because they had to change. So, I'm saying, no, for me, I'd say, go ahead and do the 100 percent. And the rationale is what I said earlier, I think is fair, based on the circumstances and what was involved. So, that was it.
So, Mr. Mayor, so, I'd like to offer what I think the rationale for the 50/50 is, and why we were at the 50/50 two, two years ago, when we made the decision, whenever exactly it was.
I was there, nevermind.
I know.
Okay.
I'm not, I know, I know you were there.
Okay.
And, you know, we voted for it.
Yeah, that's, that's what I said, and I meant we voted for it.
Yeah. And I think the rationale is this. So, for, so, we'll just take Dunwoodie, because it's a case Mr. Joyner cited, but this was our basic philosophy, which is that if you were, and, and we adopted, council adopted guidelines like this, I believe that we would pick up 10 percent, Mr. Joyner, of the cost, and the residents would pick up 90, is that right?
Yes, sir, that is correct. At that time, that philosophy was discussed, that was at the beginning of the failed development program. We were faced with 191 projects over 54 distinct subdivisions.
Right. So, we decided that, basically what happens is, people are, you're, you're buying into a subdivision, and you're taking a risk. And you're taking a risk on that developer. And that developer, in these, many of these cases, I think we ended up with, you say 54 of them, or something like that, those, we had 54 developers who weren't able to complete their subdivisions. And so, our staff, Mr. Joyner and others, did a great job in trying to find other developers who would take over those subdivisions and develop them, would, would fix up their roads, and would fix up the stormwater infrastructure. And was successful in, in almost all the cases. And, so, but what we had decided at that point was that, the, the reason that we had decided that we, we decided the city would pay a little of it, 10 percent, and the homeowners would pay the other 90 percent because the city was not, had not, had no culpability. In this case, we decided the city does have some culpability because of the, the situation that you all have pointed out about the bonds. I do want to say that, and, and Ms. Durham can confirm this, I believe, but that was, this bond language was not anything unusual. It was not something that we, the, the city put particularly into this bond package. It was in all bond packages that we had, or it was in all bond language that we had. And it was standard language, it wasn't something that, you know, no one ever used or anything like that. It was, it was typical. There was a judge that ruled against us, and that, and so, we decided, okay, instead of charging 90 percent to the homeowners, we would charge 50 percent to the homeowners. And the city would assume 50 percent of the responsibility. I think it's further complicated for me by the fact that, I mean, I, I really appreciated hearing the stories of, you know, the individuals and, and the hardships that you all face. And I get that. And, but I, you know, it's complicated for me also by the fact that, for people who've moved in recently, of which, I can't remember the number, but it's a large number. We, a couple of years ago, we looked at the percentage of people who moved in since this thing had started, and it was a pretty high number. And now, there are more people who've moved in recently. And it's hard for me to feel like we ought to be paying more than 50 percent, the city ought to be paying more than 50 percent, when so many people have moved in recently, and at least in my mind, ought to be able to, you know, are, should be at risk for this. If you move into the neighborhood in the last couple of years, and you know the situation with the stormwater and, you know, or, and the, and the roads, it seems to, clear to me that the city should not assume that risk. And should not, it doesn't seem fair, to use the words that people have used, that the city would, would do that. And so, I, you know, it's, I think it's, you know, so, we have the taxpayers to think about as well. We have you all to think about, who are in the neighborhood. But we also have this large group of, you know, we have all these taxpayers, whose money we would have to use to fix this up. And I think we ought to use part of it, because I do think the city bears some culpability. You know, exactly, is it 50/50, and was it 60/40, you know, we could argue about it. But I don't think it's true that the, that the, that the city ought to pay 100 percent of it. It, it would be generous, but I don't think it's fair. Because I do think that the people in the neighborhood had a risk, like we all do, when we buy a piece of property. And that, especially for the people that have moved in recently, which is a very large percentage of the neighborhood since this started, I definitely think that there is even more responsibility for that risk. So, I do think there's a good rationale for the 50/50. And that's, that, that in my mind is what it is. And that's, you know, I would like to say, you know, I, I understand the, the impulse to make you all whole, but I also think it's not fair to the taxpayers of Durham. We all take risks when we buy property. And I think that that was the situation in this case. The developer did not do what the developer should have done. The city has some culpability for that. And I think that because the city, for the bonds, and because the city has this culpability, I think that the 50 percent is fair. And then, I think we're, we're giving, we're stretching, you know, we're, we're trying to, given this policy, stretch this out over an eight-year payment, to try to lighten the load. And, yeah, so, that's where I am.
Recognize Councilman Reese, the mayor Proton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to put some numbers to what we've been talking about for the folks here in the audience. Because I did hear someone at the podium reference an incorrect assessment amount, and I addressed this with a couple of folks by email over the last couple of weeks. The assessment that the staff has recommended for stormwater for folks who live in Ravenstone is $287.81. That count, that comes out to a little less than $36 a year over eight years, zero interest. That's just for stormwater. So, if you're a Ravenstone property owner who has completed streets and is, is just, needs the stormwater completion, the proposal before us that the staff has recommended, recommended is $287.81. Under Councilmember Moffett's alternative proposal, Ravenstone homeowners who only need stormwater would pay $300. So, let's understand that his goal in this plan was not to ask Ravenstone residents to pay less of an assessment. Actually, you would pay more under either, under whether you have completed streets and only need stormwater, or whether you have a street assessment and stormwater. The goal of Councilmember Moffett's plan was not to help Ravenstone residents pay less of an assessment, because you will pay more under his plan. It was to make Ravenstone and Stonehill residents equal in terms of the assessment they would pay, and then to find an even number that seemed reasonable, 300 streets only, 1,500 streets plus stormwater. And then, that gets you back to a 70 percent contribution from the city. So, understand that, under the staff proposal, for streets and stormwater, if I've done my math right, the staff has asked, and this is 50 percent assessment, the total cost for streets and stormwater is $1,214, or a little over $150 a year over eight years, zero interest. Councilmember Moffett's plan would be $1,500 for a stone, for a home with streets and stormwater to be done. The reason, I believe, and the staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason is, it's going to be a lot more expensive to fix up Stonehill stormwater facilities. They look horrible. I was over there last week, they're just big holes in the ground with trees in them. And Ravenstone's stormwater facilities actually look like stormwater facilities. They're, there's a, they've, I mean, it looks like what they're supposed to look like, a, a constructed wetland, a detention pond. And so, that's the ultimate effect, the real-world effect for folks that live in Ravenstone, is that Councilmember Moffett's plan would increase your assessment. The benefit that I believe he's proposing is that it's fairer, given that when these developments were created, and the original property owners bought their lots, they, it was a random walk, whether or not it would end, they would end up in Stonehill or Ravenstone. And so, today, property owners, whether you were that buyer, or a new successor in interest, that today's property owners should not be penalized for the original buyers, even if that was them, took a random walk, and it can't, shouldn't be penalized for which development they ended up. Is that fair, Councilmember Moffett?
Well, I, I agree with the second part, but I'm not sure I agree with what you were saying about the, I agree that the stormwater assessments for Ravenstone, the total assessment for the 85 lots that have stormwater only in Ravenstone, would, those lots would be assessed twelve, a little over $12 more. But not, I, the, the part about the paving, I, I didn't follow that. So, but the second part, about trying to even out the random walk, yes, I agree with that.
Well, this is the, in fairness, Councilmember Moffett, I asked you for these numbers over the weekend, you said, go find them yourself. So, that's what I did.
No, I put them, they're in the spreadsheet I sent you. I told you which columns are in.
Not exactly. So, the, the assessment per lot on streets for Ravenstone is $927. Is that right or wrong? That's, that's 50 percent of the, what's, what I found in the plan.
Ravenstone for the, the proposed assessment for streets would be $1,945.52, and that is a 50 percent.
That is 50 percent, okay.
That is 50 percent.
Great, okay.
Yeah, the, and on a, to give you just a quick list of the numbers, the un, the, the total assessment per lot for streets for Ravenstone would be $3,891.3. For Stonehill Estates, it would be $2,998.47. That is the unadjusted total.
Okay. I apologize, Councilmember Moffett, I misread the, what the spreadsheet, what the, that number actually said. I didn't see that column. In any event, so, forget most of what I just said, because that was wrong.[1595.82][1595.82](laughter) What I will say is that I applaud Councilmember Moffett's attempt to come up with some reasonable basis to reach the goal that he's, that he's approached. He obviously spent a lot of time putting, putting this together. And I will consider the other arguments that my council member colleagues make before we vote. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Reese.
Say.
Councilman, the mayor Proton.
Good evening. I'm looking at a couple who is in bankruptcy. There's another couple who had to leave because the wife just finished treatment for cancer. And all kinds of situations confront me. And just because of my foundation spiritually, I have to have mercy on, on you and what you're going through. So, I, I would agree with what the mayor said about 100 percent for you, but to go back to the other development also, and, and they'd have to have the same mercy. But I'm in a state of mercy tonight, and nobody can argue, that, that's me. I'm in a state of mercy, and I think you have some hardships that we need to be sensitive to. And I'd like to know from somebody in stormwater what the budget is right now. How much money do we have in stormwater? In the stormwater account? We have bouquins of money. This I know.
That's the official accounting term.
Bouquins.
Yes.
That's in French.
Paul Wecky, Public Works, Stormwater Services.
Mayor Proton, we'd be happy to get you the fund balance in, in the stormwater budget, but I don't, at this point, I'm not sure that that's a number that Paul's going to have on the back of his, his back pocket.
I do.
You have it.
I doubted you incorrectly.
Can we have mon, I believe the question is, do we have money to cover the cost for the completion of the stormwater devices in Ravenstone and Stonehill? We do.
Case dismissed. Thank you.
I'm glad you have a variety of opportunities to speak.
We, we do need to be sensitive to the needs of people. I know those of us around here, you know, we don't have to worry about the money, except I'm a, I'm a little different from the rest. But we do need to have mercy. There are times for mercy. And for me, that's what I, that's who I am. And that's what, I, I'll be able to sleep tonight because I said that.
Well, again, it, I'm going to sound like a broken record, so I'm not, not going to say that again. This council can move in any direction that it wants to, that's the bottom line. Can move in any direction it wants to.
Can move in any direction it wants to. I, based on where I am, I think 50% is unfair. Don has come up with rationale for 70%. I'm talking about 100%. We've heard that we've got money to cover the stormwater piece in the budget. To me, if Don is willing to move 70, and I'm at 100, I'd be willing to split the difference in terms of where we're, I'm serious. It's, that's what, it's about how much money is the city willing to pay towards this project, given the history of it and the rationale how we got there. And I'm not faulting the staff, but the fact is, the judge ruled against us. I mean, you can count it any way you want, the judge ruled against us. They didn't rule in our favor. You know, so we're culpable, at least by the courts, and that's generally where we go to try to get things resolved. And so, I mean, for, for me, I think a reasonable compromise is, if you don't, if you don't do 100%, you don't do 70, split the difference, and let the staff figure out what the assessments would be for, for the property owners. And the difference between 70 and 100 is 30. You split the difference, that's 15, so it would be 85% covered by the city, and the property owners will cover 15%. And, you know, let them work the, work the numbers the way, where they feel.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion about a path forward?
Sure.
The memo prepared by staff has, certainly has a recommendation, but it provides us with a menu of different options for us to go forward. One of those options is alternative to city contribution and per lot assessment, and the, they offer an option of 100% city contribution. It sounds to me like that is the path that you believe is the proper choice, and if, given that, I would recommend, I would recommend that you move that option from the menu and see how many votes it gets, because I don't know how many there are right now. I, you know. And if that, if that is successful, congratulations. Mercy's achieved. If it's not successful, then we could consider our next options. Is that, is that fair?
Well, I've, I've told you what my, my, my options were. I suggested 100%, but I also said this council can do what it wants. I've suggested that maybe the compromise might be a diff, splitting the difference between Don's 70% and my 100%, which is 85% that we would cover. You know, I don't get everything I want, Don doesn't get everything he wants, nobody gets 50%, and the residents don't get everything they want. So, my, recognize, Councilmember Moffett.
Thank you. There's two, two things. I actually have my spreadsheet here, so I can tell you how we can get to 85%. Very close.
You got your computer right there.
But I wanted to ask you a question. Mr. Joyner, one of the things that my colleague, Councilmember Shul, said was that in the beginning, I was on our council in the beginning when all this was getting worked out, was that there was a concern that there was a large number of failed developments, and that the city's liability was significant, and that what the council did was adopt a policy limiting, saying that the, that the city would only participate to 10%.
That is correct.
Okay, do you remember those dollar figures? So that the beginning, there was a lot of unknowns, and I'm wondering if you had some sense of the scope and scale of those unknowns.
Yes, so there wasn't actually a dollar figure attached to that, but there was actually, so 191 projects, 54 subdivisions, that will total out to be roughly around 75 miles of streets that needed to be completed in those subdivisions. Around 38 stormwater facilities total that were not completed.
Okay.
And it represented almost 3,000 homes.
Okay. And, so, so no dollar figure attached to it, would you agree that it was a significant number of dollars?
It was a significant amount, sir.
So, so I would, then I would just observe that we're now at the end of that process, is that correct?
Yes, sir, there are actually seven subdivisions left. Two of those have complete developer agreements, they are under construction. Two of those are represented here tonight as Ravenstone and Stonehill Estates, and there are three developments that currently do not have a deal on the table, although we are working on those.
So it would be, is it reasonable to expect that whatever, that the Ravenstone and Stonehill, those are the last of the projects in which some city dollars, or some residential dollars are going to be required?
So, the other three projects are, which is a 12-lot subdivision, it needs completed streets, again, it's a small subdivision, 12 lots, and one completed stormwater facility, which is a dry pond, that's very small. The second development is Landings at South Point, that is a private development with private parking lots. It has no public streets that would need completing, and it has three stormwater facilities that are in various stages of completion.
Right.
Then the third development would be Amberland Valley Town Homes, and there is a parking lot, a small portion of street that needs to be completed that is public, and there are no stormwater facilities that need to be completed for that. They were all completed as part of the development.
So what I was trying to get to was, we started out years ago concerned, and after the Great Recession, concerned that there would be a very large city liability, that we were limiting our delight, the city's portion of that liability, and that today, what I'm, what I, what I was thinking was, we're now to a place where we know that the city's liability as a whole is less than what we were trying to limit it to.
It is drastically reduced.
So, because of the work of your department in getting these projects worked out. So, so I can see a logic for saying, we're there, we're good, we're in good shape, we can be a little more generous than we set out to be when we were worried about a huge liability for the city's taxpayers. And, and I'll comment that if we assess nothing for stormwater, and we assess every property which requires street improvements, a total of $800, that will result in the city's portion being 84.9% of the total cost. So, that is a way to get to that number as well.
Well, again, I'm, I'm about compromise and trying to find a solution that's fair. I could, I could support that. And I, I think we've learned a lesson, it's an expensive lesson, is that the cost of the property owners, and it's also at our cost, but we know how to write better bonds now. I mean, you, I've heard you say that, that, you know, we won't, we don't make the same, won't make the same mistake we made before. You didn't say that? I, I heard that. I, I heard, I heard it very clearly that you had learned from this, and you had written a better, were in a position to make sure you had better bonds written by the developers.
We have multiple measures in place, not just the bonds to try and.
But it came as a result of this. It came as a result of this. That, that's a lesson learned. But not for this, we never would have learned that. I shouldn't say would have, but for this, we did do this. You're in a better position. Recognize, Councilmember Shul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, what are we talking about here? We're talking about, let's see, 100% of the, of the, of the stormwater is, and I'm sorry, my.
738,365.
Last couple pages of my memo aren't coming in, so what is that number?
700, the stormwater alone, total cost, total cost is $738,365.
Okay. Robert, or I guess whoever is, knows about the streets, what's the street number?
The street number.
What would be 100% of the street cost?
This is, do you want the unrecovered cost?
No, I want the 100%.
1,420,945.
That's unrecovered, that's after the bond money is applied.
That's correct.
Okay, so, say it again.
So the total cost is roughly about 1.85, and after the, after the securities are applied to it, it would be just over 1.4.
1.4.
Four.
So 1.4 million in, in street, so tax money, and 760-something in stormwater fee money. So 2.1 to 2.2 million.
Just shy of 2.2, I believe.
We're talking about money that the city has to spend, and that's why I said we'd spend 1.4 million dollars for paving, that the city would have to spend, and the bonds would cover the other 800, whatever that number is. So out of pocket for the city is 1.4 million dollars, plus million dollars to cover the paving. Out of pocket expenses for the city to cover stormwater is 738-plus thousand dollars. They're the numbers we're working with. And Don, can, can you say again what, what your proposal is?
Well, the.
Just say what you, what you propose, that's.
My original proposal.
No, I'm not talking about the original, I'm talking about the one where we came.
To 85%?
Yeah, yeah.
It is to, for the city to pay the entire cost of the stormwater facilities, and to assess the lots in Ravenstone and Stonehill Estates which need road improvements, to assess them $800 apiece. That. But that's the proposal.
And I guess, I'm going to do it on my calculator, but what is the total cost to the city with this proposal?
So if we do that proposal, the city's share would, would be, if, if the costs come in at what they're estimated to be, the cost would be one, just over 1.8 million dollars.
It's $800 times 221 lots plus 187 lots, right?
So the, that's correct.
Okay. And if we look at that number.
So the, the 800 times all of the lots which need road improvements, that's 326,400.
If I may, just add, just one small item in there. I'd like to remind everyone that the stormwater has not actually been bid yet, so we are talking about dollars, and the final numbers for the paving have not come in yet, although that work has been bid and the project is almost complete. We would expect those numbers relatively soon after. We've got the final pay invoices in from the contractor, so I just want to remind everyone about the final numbers.
I'm hearing you say that the paving costs, you have a pretty good estimate on, the stormwater, you have a little less confidence in the estimates so far.
That work has not been bid.
Right. Right, it's estimated.
Right. Okay. So we want to put that in the form of a motion.
I wish I had a better reading on how much support it would get.
Well, the point is that, I mean, I guess I'm trying to go where Charlie was. Charlie's wanting us to vote on 100, see where the votes were. I'm saying, vote on the compromise and see where it is.
Okay.
Something like that.
So, so the first thing we, the first goal of the staff tonight is to get us to order, just move forward with the improvements to the stormwater facilities, is that correct?
Tonight, it's really just to get a recommendation for staff so that they could move forward with an agenda item for council to order the work.
So.
For stormwater only.
Okay, it says, "City Council direct Public Works to schedule notice public hearing. Cost to complete will be paid to a combination of assessments." So I'm going to recommend that we move forward from here with assessments that would be, that we would, we would not assess any of the residents of Ravenstone or Stonehill Estates for stormwater improvements. Then, these are not final, right? We've already, we're watching things change as we go, but the, at this moment, we're saying we will not assess them for any stormwater improvements, and that we would assess each of the homeowners which are on lots which require road improvements, that those homes would be assessed $800 apiece.
Could we step back from that a little bit?
Yes.
So if council elects tonight to 100% fund the stormwater completion, then the work doesn't need to be ordered. You're just telling Public Works, "Go do the work with city money." As far as the streets, that work has been ordered, and it was ordered with the idea that there would be a 50/50 cost share. You, council does not ultimately need to stick with that recommendation.
Right.
So what would happen with that is, the streets, the street work is currently being done, Public Works is going to put all of that cost information together. If you move forward with a direction to cap street assessments at $800, when Public Works brings forward the final assessment for the streets, that could be the way the final assessment for streets reads.
But you're saying we don't need to talk, we don't need to do that right now?
No, I, I think it would be good if you gave a recommendation to Public Works, move forward and fully fund the stormwater work, and then when you're done with the streets in these two subdivisions, bring forward a final assessment capped at $800 per lot, if that's, if that's what council wants to direct staff to do.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Recognize, the Mayor Proton.
Mr. Joyner, how long, they'll have how many years to pay that?
The current proposal is eight years.
At 0%.
At 0% interest.
Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Um.
And again, when the streets work was ordered, that was the proposal, a 50/50 cost share, paid over eight years, 0% interest. When these assessments are finally ordered, council would give the final order for how the assessment is being handled. So if it's no more than $800 per lot, and then you could say payable over eight years, 0% interest, if that's what council wants to do.
Okay. Take out 100%, that's good.
Do I have to make the motion?
No.
Oh.
I'll make such a motion.
Go on.
Well, I would move that we cap the lots at $800, we'll cap it at $800, and use the rationale that Don gave a few minutes ago.
For paving.
For paving.
For paving.
For paving.
And stormwater is free. I mean, it's 100%.
So the motion is that we cap the paving fee to $800 per lot, and that the city be responsible for paying all of the stormwater payments, is that?
Yes, sir. I second the motion.
Okay.
Mayor, can I make one more comment before you? Sure, and recognize this Assistant City Mayor.
Just before adoption, I, I think staff is clear on what council's proposing. I do want to offer clarifying comments to Mr. Webke's response about the ability of the stormwater budget to absorb the costs. He is correct, there is fund balance that is able to absorb these costs, but I don't want to leave council with the impression that that might not have some future impact on the stormwater fund. That fund is rebalanced each year to plan for the expenses that come from that, from that fund, capital projects, and so the rates are set each year and recommended to council. There is the ability to pay for it, but I don't want to leave the impression that that would have no impact. I'm sure council's aware of that, but I just wanted to state that for clarity.
Thank you.
And that impact would be that we would pay more to cover, that everyone would pay more to cover future costs.
Yes.
We keep paying.
Before we go, I want one more comment.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. We have a question, Councilmember Shul.
Let's have a comment, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to say that I'm going to vote against this. I appreciate the impulse behind it, but I, I really feel pretty strongly that this is a shared responsibility. I don't think it's true that the city is 85%, should be paying 85% and takes, should take 85% of the responsibility. I especially feel true, that's true of the, you know, scores, dozens, you know, I don't know, I can't remember that, I wish, you know, it'd be nice to have this number in front of us as we did the last time we deliberated, that new people moving into the neighborhoods since this has happened, I can't imagine why it is our responsibility, especially for them, to be paying 100% of the, the fee. So, I understand the impulse, but I feel pretty strongly that our taxpayers and rate payers are, should not be paying 100%. payers are, should not be paying a hundred percent of this. I think that the fifty percent split seems fair. I understand that, I understand the generous impulse behind the, the eighty-five percent. I just wanted to state how I'll be voting.
I can recognize Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I agree with Councilmember Schul that I'll also be voting against this, and I think, I just wanted to say, I feel like this is an example of privatizing a benefit while socializing a cost. Instead of the homeowners covering fifty percent of the cost, we're shifting that cost onto the taxpayers of Durham at large. I'm willing to do that when there's, when there's a clear public purpose, and a couple of my colleagues have brought up the housing stabilization grants that we voted for earlier today. In that case, I believe that there's a clear public purpose in neighborhood stabilization in a situation where people have been subject to these very severe waves of price appreciation, and that we are, and that we are trying to, that we are trying to keep neighborhoods stable, right, in a, in a very different way than just paying for, for incomplete infrastructure in a particular community. I feel like, like Councilmember Schul's rationale for a fifty-fifty split is the most reasonable argument that I've heard up here tonight. The city is responsible and the homeowners are responsible. I don't understand why you think you're not responsible at all. I mean, I think, I think the, I understand, I understand everyone's upset. I, I wasn't here in 2015, so I don't have the context for this issue that other folks, that other members of council have. But I, but I don't think that we came to, that fifty-fifty was a bad decision. I honestly don't know why we're going back and saying something else. I'm, I can count to four, so I'm aware that this is going to pass tonight, but I do want to say, I do not think it's fair for taxpayers of Durham to be asked to pay for a benefit that will primarily accrue to a few individuals at an eighty-five percent level. I think it is completely reasonable for the city and for y'all to share the responsibility. And I understand why you wouldn't want to pay anything. If I was in your position, I wouldn't want to pay anything either, but my, but what we're trying to do is make public policy.
Hey, hey.
No, 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 we're talking about going back and changing your assessments completely.
Quiet it down, please. Councilman, Councilwoman Johnson has, Councilwoman Johnson, just a minute, please, just a minute. Respect her comments, please, and her ability to say that. Go ahead.
If we go back and both cap the street assessments, right, that's the maximum that you'll pay, is eight hundred dollars. So, so is, I mean, so no, you're not already paying the street assessments, right? Like, we're going back and undoing what council did before and replacing it with another, with another option. Again, that's what's gonna happen, but to me, it feels like we're taking taxpayer money and giving it to a small group of people, and that everyone will pay for that. Everyone in the city will pay for that. So I would be comfortable with them paying for, for half of the responsibility, but I'm not comfortable with them paying for eighty-five percent of it.
Further comments? If not, I'm gonna call a question. Everybody clear on the motion?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, will you open the vote, please? Open the vote. Close the vote.
It passes four to three with Councilmember Johnson voting no, Councilmember Reese voting no, and Councilmember Schul voting no.
All right, let's move to any other items to come before the council tonight. Thirty-three? What is thirty-three?
Oh, yes. Thank you. This is brief, I'm sorry, this is on, the reason I pulled this item is that I got an anonymous letter. So I didn't have a way to address it, but to ask staff to answer, to see if they could answer the questions. This includes sidewalk repairs downtown, and the question is, I'm sorry, I didn't send this to you earlier, I just opened it up, I think I got it today. "All the sidewalk on north and east side of City Hall is being replaced." So I don't know if that's true, but that's what the letter says. "Even though some of the sidewalk appears to be very new, what makes this project a high priority for limited sidewalk repair dollars?"
Good evening, Tasha Johnson, Public Works Assistant Director. So that particular location had several service requests, and it had been identified through citizen concerns over the last couple of years, and so as we developed the project, we looked to identify locations that had a backlog of service requests as well as a high pedestrian use.
Okay. The, the next question they asked would be, is, "Would this sidewalk be removed and replaced if the city does the two-way loop project?"
I don't think so. I don't think the two-way loop project should have very much construction associated with it, but I'll have to look to transportation to confirm that.
Okay.
Bill Judge with Transportation. Yeah, the concept behind most of the loop project would be to maintain the curb lines in the existing location, so it should have minimal impact on the sidewalk.
Thank you. The next question they asked was, "Are there greater sidewalk repair needs elsewhere in the city's neighborhoods and even downtown in places like Church Street?"
So we have quite a bit of sidewalk repair need throughout the city. There are locations throughout the whole city that we could look to for future projects, and what we are trying to do is spread them across geographic area across the city as well as identify locations that have, have high pedestrian activity.
Great. Thank you very much.
We do have another, a number of other sidewalk repair projects in the hopper for repairs all around the city, so this work is in addition to several other projects.
Thank you. I want to appreciate you for staying so late, for answering the questions, and, Mr. Mayor, if no one has any other comments, I'll move the item.
Second. It's been properly moved, the second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Open the vote. Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
I need to ask for an excuse absence from work session Thursday.
Second.
It's been properly moved, the second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Open the vote. Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Okay. Any other items to come before the council?
No, sir.
If not, council's adjourned at ten thirty-five P.M.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
That would have been awesome. That would have been totally awesome.